What the hell is that? He said, "Well, if you're enjoying yourself there, there's a good chance you're not coming back here." Pretty good.
That's right. That's great.
So you got involved with both the politics here, the VA?
Yeah, I'm sure he can't resist.
Oh, I thought-
Even if he hasn't yet.
Yeah. He's a dude.
We FaceTimed him one day from the office. And it was evening back then, and I think he was already-
Oh, yeah. At least he starts about two.
He was leaning back in his-
He was on his bed. No, he was on his bed. His pillows were behind him.
Yeah, anything after 11:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
Look at it.
Right.
Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I welcome you to the Thursday, September 10th, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will have the commissioners introduce themselves. We have one of our commissioners who is on Zoom. You would introduce yourselves. Can you hear me, Tom?
Hello.
Voice in the background is Tom.
Yeah. Yeah, Tom is here in Ridgeway, Colorado, at 39 degrees. And I think I have cataracts, it's so gray here.
Morning, Stan Galagaski. Greg Lozello.
Ted Gamboggi. Butch Tracy.
George Lee.
This is an open public hearing, and it is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being talked about. Representatives of the public media, the public, local cable, and/or radio stations may also re-broadcast. The numbers of commissions is seven, and we require four votes for a majority. Some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely. All parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are asked to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public who are called upon are required to state their name and address for the record, so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them later if necessary. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the last meeting. There has been some questions that came up concerning the minutes, so we are going to defer that until our next meeting on that. So we're not going to vote on the minutes in this time until we can resolve the actual wording that may need to be changed or be stayed the same, okay?
Mr. Chair, can I make a correction on that?
Don't know for sure.
Actually, since we're asking you to defer them, if you could provide that correction to Kaylee, we'll bring them back to you, we'll find the corrections together.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is CSP 20-002, a comprehensive sign plan for Founding Fathers at 200 North Granite Street. Property owner is Founding Fathers L.C.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, I need to recuse myself of discussing and voting in this matter.
Thank you for being chairman, members of the commission, Tammy Dewey, community manager of the city of Prescott. This is a comprehensive sign plan for the new Founding Fathers. So here's an imagery map to kind of give you perspective. Right here is where the new Hilton is going. Then we have the bridge that crosses Granite Creek here. We have the Granite Creek Trail system that comes through here through Granite Creek and comes behind this property down to Willow Street. Here's Granite. This is the Sam Hill building that the Hill is going to be refurbishing to do as an event center. That'll be part of the hotel. So the idea is that this building, they want to try to get some traffic or advertising from Granite Creek Trail system, because we are doing a lot of improvements to that trail system to get more usage on it, and to try to get some advertising or visibility from Willow Street here, since it is back here off of the side street. So this is a 7,576 square foot building that was originally built in 1954. In 1954, they could have put large signs painted on the building like we've seen in other historical buildings in the area. Under our current code, they're a little bit more restricted. So what they're asking for is this is the creek side. They're asking for signage on this side of the building to be visible from the creek. And then they have a little emblem here, which will be visible from Willow Street over here, and then the main signage here on the front of Granite Street. So here's some images from Buller Earth to kind of show you. This is from Willow Street looking at Granite, and this is the building here in question. And then this is looking back at it to Willow Street on Granite. This is their parking area. Here's the Granite Creek built area. So they're asking for signage on the front here. On the other side here, that'll be visible from Granite Creek Trail system. And then on the other side, on this little corner here, to be visible from Willis. And here's another view of the front of the building. So what they're asking for is on the front of the building, on the Granite Street side, is I want to, this is the name of the biz, the collective, and then to have the different types of businesses that are going to be in here. They have six different brands that are going to be in this building, and they're currently under remodeling it to get it started. So now we're coming forward with the signage. So they're wanting to build a brand each as a different types of uses that are going to be in the building, such as the barber, the taproom, and coffee shop and such. This is from the creek side view. What they're proposing for is the 956 square feet of signage to best total on this side, which the only place you're going to be able to see this is on the creek side. So people on Willow Street or from Granite Street won't see this. And this is all painted on the building, and any lighting will be downlit and meet our dark sky requirements, if they're going to have any. So here's some renderings. So this is the little emblem there that'll be visible from Willow Street, and then the painting on the building. And then here's another view with the different brands on the front of the building to advertise it. So that was, this was provided. So on the roadside, we base it on the length of the building and how close it is to the roadway. So on the roadside, they would be allowed to go 62.42 square feet, and they're asking for the 484.5, which, you know, seems like a lot, but if you compare it to where it's located off the beating path, the beating path, the main corridors, it's not too out of character. On the parking lot side, they would be allowed 36.25. They're asking for 36 on the other side, and they don't have any signage proposed on the parking lot side, so that would be okay. And then on the creek side, they would be allowed, because it goes across the creek and there's a road on the other side, they would count back towards square footage for signage, and they'd be allowed 187.25 square feet, and they're asking for 956. So they are allowed total 285.92 square feet, and they're asking for 1,476.5. Like I said, back in 1956, when the building was built, it would have been able to have this signage as pre-existing signage, but it hasn't had that since then. So that kind of concludes my presentation. I am free to answer any questions. The applicant is also here. And here's a recommended motion, if you choose, with this floor to the city council. And I'm free to answer questions.
Chairman, questions from the commissioners? I have one. Could you point out where the trail goes along Granite Creek there?
Sure. So it comes through here. From over here is where the shopping center is. It'll come under the bridge. And then I believe they can come through here, and this is the green belt here, Granite Creek corridor. So it goes right behind the building.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, yes.
Do you come up with questions, sir? I took a walk down there myself on the trail, just to get a feel for what it is. In the summertime, it looks like it's going to be a lot of foliage here, blocking off the view of the building. So you're looking for, how's that going to be of assistance to you?
Mr. Chairman, could I order, would you say your name and your address, please? Yes, Greg Casaba. My address is 1951 Estrella Road, Prescott Arizona, 86305.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, we have quite a bit of space on the building, so I know quite possibly at the beginning when the building was built, it might be 7,000-
Could you turn your mic a little more toward you?
Yep, so-
Thank you, that-
The actual size of the building is close to 14,000 square feet usable space, and we have a 1,500 square foot back deck on the backside that just got completed this last week. We're running pavers on the creek side, so about another 2,000 square feet of paver. So we have quite a bit of utilization of the outside space up into the creek. And across the creek to the west is where the current walkpath is. And so we're trying to capture a lot of the walkability that is currently happening right now with patrons and citizens within Prescott. And then as the city cleans up the entire walkpath from Granite Creek corridor all the way down to, I believe, Prescott Mile High, we're just trying to maximize the space utilization of our building, what we have. And so we were asking for the front side of the building. We figured we'd ask for the backside as well, so we don't have to come in front of you as again to ask for.
Well, you're aware that probably during half the year, the signage is not going to be very visible from the walking path with all the trees there.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? This is Ted Gamboggi. Do you have an idea how far the walkpath is from the sign?
Let's see, roughly 25 yards.
25 yards. And the sign that's facing out towards Manzanita? What's the logic behind having, if my math is correct, it's about 5, 6 or 7? Why so large?
Do you mean Granite or Willis, or you said Manzanita, but?
On the creek side, I believe you're talking about.
Creek side, yeah.
Okay. So the creek side, the lower one, we just wanted to maximize the overall space of the building. So it's a rather large building. We've done quite a bit of upgrades on the exterior of the building, so we have large windows and long garage doors and the like. The entire project was pretty extensive, and so we wanted to repaint the entire exterior. We're wanting to add something to the exterior that adds to it instead of just a kind of a blind neutral gray, which is currently what we painted it to. So that showcases what the businesses are that are inside.
The Founding Fathers side, whose side does that face?
That faces the Granite Street side, sir.
And here you're about?
We're probably 15 yards from actually Granite Street. So the signage on Granite Street is at Founding Fathers, which is the top logo, and it's about, I believe it's at 600 square feet, or 600 hearts.
It's about 484.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Stan Galagaski, I do have one comment. I just want to commend you, Grant, on your forward thinking on this. We know that North Granite really hasn't had a lot occurring many, many years, but now with the hotel going on, we know there's an access point going on in North Granite, and then the Granite Creek corridor being approved. I mean, it is wise that you're asking for this at the same time. So thanks for doing this this time and asking for it all at once.
Hey, you've been thinking.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of CSP 20, is that the call? 20-002 Comprehensive Sign Plan for Founding Fathers Collective.
Do you have a motion? A second. A second, so a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now, since we have one of our members on Zoom, we're going to have each commission member be polled for their response on this. And we'll start. Kaylee?
Don Michaelman?
I should vote last.
Should vote last, okay.
Yes.
Ted Gamboggi?
Yes.
Stan Galagaski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
We're going to take a short little break, because Tammy has another position she has to go to, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct. It's in the background.
While we take the break, I need to introduce our city council members who are present. Steve Siska, Kathy Brucey, Billy Orr, and Phil Good. I'm sorry, I'm not saying-
It's like the most sound, they're starting to need like a wall or something.
Well, I will do that.
I definitely appreciate it, sir, as much as when I started getting these masks, seeing my tickle off. Make it something I love to eat. Live.
You have that 70-seater there still?
The what?
The 70-seater still there?
Yeah! No, no, I did, I did left for, it was over the holiday weekend. Probably going to bring it back for Thanksgiving and a second one. That picture, you're listening. Oh my gosh, are you on mono? Oh my gosh, I mean, seriously, like, so-
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. What's going on?
Oh, you know, just-
Love that. Spoken, spoken. He's not surprised.
So, yeah, when we go to break, you can continue.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're ready to go.
Okay. I apologize for the interruption, but we wanted to make sure that we could do all the transmission of information for all parties on this. Next up will be George giving some comments to some questions we had on the AED South presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we're actually, we have a agenda discussion. Well, we have the agenda discussion of the whole Northland South for your action today, if you wish. But we also have had a lot of questions that relate to the aspect of the development, which generally isn't part of the planning commission, and that's a discussion of development agreement. And that development agreement discussion started with a letter of intent, and our city attorney was deeply involved in developing that, and we have a brief slide presentation for him to catch you up on basically what's going on outside of your purview, but in general, within the knowledge of the public.
So, good morning, chairman, commission, and members of the public. As George said, there were a number of questions that were raised about the development agreement and how that affects the potential annexation and rezoning of the property. And as George said, there is, you know, generally speaking, planning commissions don't review in detail development agreements, whether it's pre-annexation agreement or whether it's a development agreement for property already annexed in the city that's going through, say, a rezoning or some sort of entitlement process. But because this is such a significant deal or a significant issue for the city, we felt it may be helpful for the commission and the public to sort of take a step back and see the big picture of what you're being asked to look at and what you're being asked to do. And so that's where the letter of intent comes in. And I think probably everybody's pretty aware of the letter of intent. There's a lot of publicity, there were press conferences, there was a council meeting where the letter of intent was approved unanimously. And so I'm going to go through it kind of just in summary, so that everybody sort of remembers or recalls and is aware of what happens or what's going on kind of in the background. And then just to acknowledge that the letter of intent will be converted or will end up as a development agreement that will go through the same public process at the council level as will the annexation, rezoning, and other requests of approval. So-
Space far things.
This?
Space far.
Say it again?
The space far.
Okay.
Right mouth.
So, and this is pulled out of the language of the letter of intent, kind of put in more basic terms. So the purpose of the letter of intent was to ultimately enter into a pre-annexation development agreement between the city and Arizona ECO. And the purpose was to lay out, to sort of structure a foundation of what the development agreement was going to look like, and to address the major deal points between the city and AED. And that's important to know, is that the city and AED have now agreed on, even though it's in the form of a letter of intent, have agreed on major deal points that I'll address in the letter of intent. Okay, so although what we, when we talk about the LOI, we talk about it in terms of being a non-binding agreement. What that means, though, is that we convert that to a binding agreement, a development agreement. What that doesn't mean is that we can then change fundamental aspects of the deal between the city and Arizona ECO. And so when people talk about, and you'll hear this from the public, I think that, well, the details matter. And then, yeah, details do matter. The details, you'll address a lot of details here in your analysis and your decision-making. But what the details should not, or should not do, is change the fundamental aspects of the basic deal. In other words, if you call it a detail, that's fine, but if the detail changes a basic term, it's no longer a detail, it becomes the basic term. So I have to caution the commission, the public, to be careful about, you know, inserting what are termed details that would ultimately change the basic conditions or basic agreement between the city and Arizona ECO.
So Tom?
Annexation.
Tom what?
Yes, you did.
Tom what? Tom Hutchison here, John. So essentially, what I heard you say was that the letter of intent is really a development agreement?
No, it's not what I said. Letter of intent will ultimately be, well, the basic terms or the terms of the letter of intent will ultimately be placed into a development agreement, and there'll be additional details, but the details have to be consistent with the basic terms. The details can't change the basic terms. Otherwise, the concern or the fear I think we all should have is that if the detail changes the basic term, it kills the deal. And I think, I don't think anybody wants to kill this deal. Well, that may be presumptuous. I think most of us don't want to kill this deal. Maybe there are some out there that do, I don't know. But, so there is a formal process for going and approving a development agreement. That's a statutory process. And the statutory process basically allows for a development agreement to deal with things like terms of annexation, and then land use and entitlement type, density, intensity, types of uses that are allowed. The development agreement can deal with those things, but it also deals with some other really substantial issues that I'll get to. But the LOI sets out the framework between, within which the city and AED, hopefully, I guess, re- hopefully, I guess, reach a, a final decision. So process-wise, annexation, the, the development, the LOI.
John, can I finish?
Sure.
To, Tom here again. I'm sorry to stop you. The, the problem that I'm having with this is that when I read the language, the first two paragraphs of the letter of intent, the, the language speaks to pre-annexation development agreements. Pre-annexation. We're here today to, to talk about approving annexation.
No, you're not actually. You're here making a recommendation to the city council who will ultimately decide on the annexation decision. So your, the commission, today's approval does not annex the property. It makes a recommendation to the council.
I, I understand that. But if you read, if you read, read the language of Prop 400 very, very carefully, it specifically says that when you annex, first, the intent of Prop 400 was all about water. Okay? Then it goes on to say that there are added steps, added scrutiny to annexation. Okay, that, that need to be followed. And included in that is approval, a master plan approval by the Planning and Zoning Committee, followed by a 60-day period. So it seems to me that, that we've got the cart in front of the horse. That, that's, that's, and by the way, I spent four years of my life protecting Ford Motor Company from lawsuits. Okay? So I've got a, a feel for, for staying out of trouble. And, and my intent here isn't to slow anybody down or to be a wet blanket over this process. My intent is to keep us out of trouble. To keep us from a lawsuit like the county's in on, on the jail. So, so I'm asking very carefully here the question about the order in which we do things, and if in fact the development agreement has to precede an annexation vote.
It will.
Okay, so.
Council.
So, okay, so everybody understands that.
Say it again?
So I want everybody, all the other commissioners, to clearly understand that. And I asked, I asked also, and maybe it's, maybe it's inappropriate at this point, but later on in this discussion, I'm going to ask that Ralph Hess's written statement be put on the board so that we can refresh our memory how a, essentially a retired Yavapai County judge has essentially the same opinion.
Well, you know.
So, 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 so the order in which we do things is, is what I'm asking about.
I, you know, and I'll, I'll address Ralph's comments as the time comes up, but I can tell you that, that Ralph's opinion is inconsistent with pretty much every other city attorney in the state regarding the planning commission having a review of a pre-annexation or any development agreement. It, it's just not part of, there's no authority in statute for planning commission to review a development agreement. Nor is there, nor is there any required. So.
So, so here's my question. Here's my question. Are the development agreements part of the master plan?
No. The, the pre-annexation development agreement is a pre-annexation development agreement. And part, and then part, the approval process that this goes through with the council is, in, in order, pre-annexation development agreement, annexation, zoning, and then whatever, whatever other ancillary type approvals are requested or required as part of the process. So as you today will have an opportunity to vote on multiple items, primarily annexation and rezoning as a recommendation to the city council. The city council will then go through a similar process and have a series of votes on the, on one item after the other, after the other, after the other. And at any time on that process, if a vote fails, then the whole deal's off.
Yeah, I, I get that. Thank you for being patient with me. I wanted to make sure that the other county or commission members understood that, that moot point. Thank you.
As far as the annexation process goes, this is the LOI lays the doubt that the city will follow state law, city charter, and city code when it comes to annexation process. And that includes things like the 60-day comment period, the supermajority vote required, that's in the charter. But also we have to follow state law when it comes to annexation because the, 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 the leg-, the legislation or the state statute that deals with annexation, courts have dealt with that. And courts have addressed it and said essentially, legislature has the primary power to, to, to govern annexation requirements. So we must follow state law first and foremost, when it comes to annexation over anything that's in the charter or anything in, in city code. Because, because, because courts have clearly determined that, that state law controls over any other conflicts in local, in local law, local code, or local charter. Okay, so. And again, if you have any questions about any of this, please, please feel free to ask them if you're. So we refer to South and North Parcel. You've seen both of these obviously. And these are, these, these, these maps, these are part of, these are part of the, of the, of the letter of intent. So we see the South Parcel. You're familiar with that. And these are the maps from the LOI. So we may have changed somewhat, been more refined as part of your package. But I wanted to show you what originally was put in the LOI because again, it was a broad, it was a broad document. And obviously, things have gotten more refined since then. And this is the North Parcel. So this is the North Parcel here. The LOI also deals with what's referred to as the Granite. For to Granite Springs.
Granite Dell's Parkway.
Granite, Granite, sorry, Granite Dell's Parkway Parcel, which is here. And it also deals with something called Section 33, which is here, and I'll get to that in a minute. So here, here's the, here's the sort of eye on the prize deal. This is what I think everybody really sort of needs to remember about all this. As part of the development agreement, as part of the series of approval, AED will convey to the city at no cost to the city 475 acres of land from the South Parcel for use as permanent open space. And that's shown in this, this, this sort of cute green area here. It used to be nicer color green, but it just, for some reason. So that's this, this is 475 acres. And you, like I said, you've seen this from George in the last meeting. Okay? At the same time, the city, the AED will convey to the city at no cost 270 acres of land from the North Parcel, and that's this pink area.
John?
Yes?
Can I ask a quick question? I hate to interrupt.
No, no, please, please do.
Those two acres, the 475 and 270, that's a plus and minus. How much plus and minus is there?
It, it, it all depends on the survey, essentially. It's, it's because, because these aren't survey parcels. But the intent is to be, to be as close as possible to 475. So if there's a 1% or 2%, you know, I don't, again, I don't know what the surveyor is going to go out and shoot, but the whole intent is to get as close as possible to, and, and by the way, the development agreement will ultimately have a needs and bounds survey parcel that's going to be attached to the development agreement that will show the precise, the precise acres acreage for both, both the South and North Parcel dedications.
Plus and minus could be a couple acres, but it's not going to be 20, 50 acres.
It shouldn't be. It, it shouldn't be. And, and, and again, it, the intent is to get 475 plus or minus and 270 plus or minus. It, it shouldn't be a significant per, if it's 1%, that's four acres. You know, it, it, but again, it, it all depends on the surveying and how the line lays out on the ground. But the goal, obviously, the mutual goal, it's not just the city's goal, but the mutual goal is to get 475 and, and 270. And if it's 0.1 or, or 474.9, that's the plus or minus intent.
Is that not looking at eight?
No, 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 not at all. That's not the intent.
All right.
Okay. So the 270 is this pink area. And then also note that the, the development agreement provides that the city will acquire from AED another 131 acres, which is this white orange area here. And the price for that is, is determined by, by appraisal. And so the agreement provides that the city and AED will agree on the appraiser who's qualified to appraise airport land. And that's the price that the city pays. So it, it, it's, it's not, it's not, well, it's an appraised, it's the appraised price. So it's going to be sort of this professional objective number that the city, that the city will pay. So that's 400, again, 400, 401 acres plus or minus for, in and around the airport. And obviously, you just, and you'll get into more detail today, but this is the runway, this is the main runway here. So this is all, you know, essentially becomes permanent open space around the airport at the, at the end of the runway to protect forever the vi, the viability of, of the airport. Okay, so that's, that's the, that's the main point of the, one of the main points of the LOI. In, in return for that, the city's going to provide 753 acres acre feet of water. And it's broken down here in terms of how it's used in, in terms of acre feet and in terms of type of residential, residential, commercial type development. So, and you can, if you want to go through these in detail, but this is the, this is the water deal. So 753 gross is the gross number of acre feet of water in, essentially in return for that, that, that land dedication to the city. And here's the second part. So all this totals up to 753 acres. Now, the, the key to that is that there are some conditions. First, most importantly is the bottom bullet point, is that AED owns 375 acre feet of surface water at Watson Lake. That gets conveyed back to the city.
John, Tom Hutchinson here again. Can, can you speak to the relative value of groundwater versus surface water? Which is more valuable?
Well, it's the same. In this case, it's the same because the 375 acre feet of surface water every year is put into the ground.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. So surface water can go away. Groundwater is always there. So, so it seems to me that groundwater has an inherent higher value than.
Case because the AED's water right is primary. So it, 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 it's primary to every other claim of water right on the, on the lakes. So that 375 is, is an, is a, is a, is water that gets reaped, that gets recharged it back into the ground every year. So the 753 is a number that is ultimately used as an estimate because we're, we really are talking about it in terms of development units, residential units, commercials. But that 753 isn't used on day one, remember. It, it's going to take years and years, years to build this, if this is approved, it'll take years and years to build this project, build it out all, all told. And so over time, we'll get to that 753. But from day one, once the severance transfer occurs, that 375 was, every year goes back into, into the city's water portfolio. So it, it's, it's sort of, if you think about the cumulative effect where we, where the city gets 375 every year and, and AED gets to use water, but it doesn't use 753 from day one. It, it's going to take years to get to that number, to get complete build-out of this, of these, of these two parcels. So, so the 375 is recharged back into the, into the city, into the ground and, and back for, into the city's portfolio. And also note that the water use, and this is part of the conditions, that the water use for all of the parcels must comply with the city's rules and regulations for water use, which means it all has to be sewer. It all has to follow, all of the development has to follow the city's rules and regulations for outdoor water use, which, which keeps it at a minimum. And so our current sort of track record, if you will, of water use is that, is that on new development, the city gets upwards of 90% of the water that's, that goes out, returned as effluent, that we treat and put back into the ground. So we get 375 a year plus all of the 753. 90% of that comes back as effluent, is treated and is put back into the ground.
John, Don Michael. Is this applicable to that section of land that's outside the city limits?
Yes, that's it. And I'll get to that. So, so if you look at these, and again, this is taking a little longer than I thought, but I'm happy to go through this. If you look at these allocations that are, that are sort of assigned to different parcels, the, the LOI allows for, for AED to reallocate these numbers amongst the parcels. But the condition of that is that the South Parcel density can't increase. So that 850 number is basically a fixed figure. If, if, if AED wants to reduce the 850 based on water allocation and, and reassign that to different parcels, the 850 is, is a cap. The other parcels can go up and down depending, obviously depending on zoning and things like that as well. But, but the 850 is a cap on the South Parcel. And that was, I think, important to everybody as we've heard that, that people are mostly concerned about development on the South Parcel. As I mentioned, AED must comply with all of the, has to hook up the city sewer and, and comply with the rules and regulations. AED has to pay for all the infrastructure costs as well as all the development impact fees. So there are no free rides in this deal. And then the Section 33 parcel, and I'll go back to the map real quick. As quickly as I can, using this mouse. Okay, so Section 33 parcel, which is here, which is not, is not part of your decision-making because it's not being annexed into the city. And the main reason is, is this big parcel of state land is between the city, what, what, what might get at, what, what between what's in the city here. So obviously, the city can't leapfrog it annexed. So, so the city can, can provide water and sewer to that parcel. But if that parcel doesn't, for some rea-, most likely, and if it doesn't annex into the city, whether it remains in Yavapai County or is annexed into Prescott Valley, that part, those users pay a 30% surcharge, which is our standard outside the city rate for, for water. And also the effluent generated, that 90% must be used for permanent recharge. So it's consistent with the charter, the Prop 400 charter requirement that, that development that gets water happen, that water has to go for permanent recharge. So, so we're, again, we're, we're being, even though we're providing water to outside the city, and even though it's not, that Section 33 isn't subject to the Prop 400 requirements, we're still following those. And then the city will assist in requiring rights of way for water sewer utilities in ingress for the Section 33.
John, Tom here again. The Prop 400 says all of the effluent needs to be recharged.
Yeah.
And, and you quoted the number 90%.
Well, yes.
Are we out of, are we out of compliance?
No, no. All the water that goes out, 90% comes back as effluent, which is treated and recharged. So that, that, that effluent is, is used for permanent recharge. But it's 90% of the water that goes out.
Uh huh. All of the affluent.
All the, not all of the water, because obviously there is always going to be a.
You can't. Can't capture it all.
Comes back for various reasons. So a couple other sort of important but lesser points. The city is going to build the, the crossing over the creek, and that is paid for by development impact fees. That's a development impact, impact fee project that the council approved, let's say, over a year ago. So that, that's being paid for by every time a building permit is pulled in, in, in the city in that, in that area. The impact fee is collected to help build that crossing. The city will technically acquire the old Granite Creek Bridge from Yavapai County, and you saw that on the last presentation for, for primarily pedestrian, bicycle, maybe equestrian, but, but probably, but not likely vehicle traffic. And, and then this, and you'll hear a little bit more about this today, perhaps, when we talk about the North Parcel is that we agree that we'll provide two through the fence rights for two operators on the North Parcel. And I'll get back to the map to give you some perspective. So this parcel here is purplish parcel. AED will have the right or a subsequent. So this parcel here is purplish parcel, AED will have the right, or a subsequent owner will have the right to access a through-the-fence here for, for use. And there's, there'll be a whole bunch of restrictions that consist of FAA rules and regulations about through-the-fence agreements. And just to be clear, it's through, it's not two through-the-fence openings. In other words, it may be a single gate effectively, but allow for two operators or two owners to access through. So that's part of the deal. And that has to, essentially, the bottom line of what, that use would have to be aviation or aeronautical related type use for through-the-fence. No residential would be allowed or anything like that. Okay, and so, and then the resort, which again, I think is a, is a big, has been sort of a point of discussion. This is what the LOI talks about. The, the resorts located on parcels K and L, which is consistent with the general plan. It has to, in the level and language talks about being designed and about to blend into the environment. If, if it's not used as a traditional hotel that generates traditional transaction privilege tax and traditional bed tax, then, then the city still gets income, but it's basically comes out as a sort of a use fee, or a, or an averaging, so that if it's done as a timeshare, or done as some other type of use, that doesn't, that wouldn't pay sales and bed tax, the city still gets the full remission or remiddle of what would be the bed tax and sales tax if it were otherwise used as a residential hotel. The language in the, in the LOI, which is, again, this is all be carried over in a development agreement, that the resort will be entitled to a crossing under, over, or across Piedmont Trail. It's the language in the agreement. Obviously, everybody's working towards avoiding the across, either, oh, I think the preference appears from most people is it's either under or over. But that's something that will be worked out, and I think we heard last time, that a lot of that's going to depend on the engineering at the time. And again, important language is, it's at a location of the city's choosing. So we, so the city has control over the precise location of where this goes. And that could certainly help guide or direct whether it's an over or under versus an across type crossing. And the purpose of that, you know, so it has to be between parcels H and K. Let me go back, I keep going back to the map, sorry about this, but I think it's important for perspective. So eight, between H and K here. And, and I think if you recall, Mr. DC coming up last time, talking about it, you know, what, what, I don't think anybody wants is to, is to cut into this city open space and cross that here. I think, I think everybody, I assume everybody wants the crossing to not interfere with, with the open space and to cross it in this sort of stretch here. So that, that's the, that's between H, parcel H and parcel K. And that's it. Any other questions? Happy to address.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
George. Chairman, so one of the things we did last time during our meeting was to talk about a number of issues, and we had a lot of comments come back to us from those issues. And some of what we're going to do today is talk a little bit more about AED South. We want to make sure that we're clear on where we're going, when AED South, and then we'll step over into AED North and talk about the impacts and issues to figure. I think one of the things that you're going to hear from me multiple times today, and I apologize in advance, is I'm going to keep telling you what your job is in regard to annexations. It's important that we stay on track, that you don't get off taking votes or making motions on things that are outside. But purview of the planning commission is that could potentially violate charter or violate state law. So we're going to protect you from yourselves and keep you on task. There are very specific things that we're going to talk about. So first, as John mentioned, Arizona revised statutes, the state law, has very specific requirements of you. In both the north and the south, the first requirement is sort of a technicality. You have to make a recommendation as to what the initial city zoning is when it's annexed down. Even though we know immediately, you're going to reason, says it in the statute, you have to do it. We're going to provide you specific language associated with that in motions for both the north and the south. The second aspect of requirements of the statute is you have to recommend to city councils what the zoning should be for the properties being annexed. Multiple zonings in, in both north and south need to be addressed. So we will show you again the zoning maps proposed for each of those, and your motions will reflect what is either being requested, or what's being requested with modifications from you. And we've talked a lot about the city charter and Prop 400. Prop 400 had some very specific requirements also about annexations that were over 250 acres. And specifically, sort of inversely, they wrote into that proposition that a vote by the planning and zoning commission on a master plan, up or down, any direction, triggers a 60-day public review and comment period before city council can take action.
George, Tom, Tom Hutchison here.
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you please refresh everybody's memory on what the intent of Prop 400 is?
It was to provide additional public review and comment on any large annexation. It was primarily and initially related to water usage.
Thank you.
It affects all other aspects of the development, as, and we'll talk a little bit about more details that are outside the purview of the planning commission, but were included in Prop 400. Your question, sir?
Yes. And I can't find it right now, but I'm going to try to do it from memory. So bear with me. One of the things that I realized, and I was reviewing this with another commissioner, was that the zoning that's in the county today is RCU 2A.
That's correct.
And the zoning we're bringing in under is not the same, and yet we're required to have it be the same. But what I see is the zoning that's going to be recommended is residential 35 and residential 18. And neither of those are, are two-acre apartment, two-acre equivalent. So how do, how do we say that those are equal?
I will hit a slide with the table showing county zoning and the, the prospective zoning to explain that. Thank you.
You could have saved me a lot of crying if you'd have mentioned that right then. I'm going to tell you that.
I wasn't sure where you were going.
Here was I.
Okay. Back to the master plan recommendation. So Prop 400 doesn't specifically say you have to approve a master plan. It says that when you do, it triggers a 60-day period. So we presume that means you have to approve a master plan. So we incorporate the master plan requirement in any annotation that's 250 acres or larger, and thus subject to Prop 400. So again, your action on the master plan, and no other part of the annexation discussion we're having today, is what triggers the 60-day public comment period. So that's an important thing. If you recall, last meeting, we didn't have you set up for an action item on AED South, specifically because we don't want a situation where you may have two concurrent offset 60-day comment periods that will cause confusion in the long run. If you vote on either of the annexations, we're going to request you vote on both of the annexations, specifically this, the master plan, to trigger that 60-day period from the same day for both the north and the south. Partly a technicality. Other requirements that are not affected and do not affect the planning commission does, that are generally known public, at the end of the 60-day period, staff has to present public comments to the councils before they can take an action. The action by council takes three quarters of the council members to approve the annexation. That's six out of seven council members. And it's been mentioned before, John mentioned that, and the affluent, any affluent collected from the annexed areas has to go toward permanent recharge. So those are specific things. They're sort of outside your purview, but you hear so much about it, and so many of the public comments associated with those, we thought we would touch on those. So a quick review of some of the AED South issues that we talked about last time. Again, the location. Use the mouse as effectively as John did. This is an existing area of the city called Granite Dells Estates. There's a fairly dense development already underway here. This is an area called Walden Ranch or Walden Farms. It's another fairly dense development already inside the city. This would fill the gap, so to speak, of a portion of that area. These are industrial developments to the north, inter-residential, inter-residential. And then we get down to the key part of the LOI and the entire annexation negotiations, and that's the Dells down here, which are primarily undeveloped at this time. There's not much in the way of, of any kind of structures down here, other than trails. There are a couple of roads that run through to serve private properties to the south. Commissioner Lee mentioned the appropriate zonings. There are actually three different county zonings that affect the south annexation. A large portion of it is RCU 2A. That's county designations, residential and minimum two-acre lots. We're proposing that the initial annexation zoning be our E2 acre, that's the city's rural estate two-acre, two-acre lots. The R1L 35 and the R1L 18 are residential with minimum lot sizes and square feet rather than acres, 35,000 and 18,000. City has identical density levels, 35,000 and 18,000 with their asset 35,000, asset 18,000. So in fact, in the south, there are three different zonings that are applicable, and we're proposing to match those with city zones that have exactly the same density. Reason we do that is there is a prohibition in state law to annex property and establish an initial zoning that increases the density. We have to be at or lower than the county density with the initial zone, at or lower. Now, on the north annexation, we'll get to that a little bit later, it is all RCU two-acre in the county. And the city's proposal for that, and I'll, I have another slide for that later, I have a slide for everything, I hope you're comfortable, is to do the same thing we're doing here. Go to rural estate two-acre as the initial zoning, and then proceed with re-zonings after that. Did you have a question, sir?
Yes. Again, I meant the county zoning is, I guess what I'm asking is, it's my understanding that all the county zoning is RCU 2A, period. Periods? No?
Not in, not in the south annexation area. There are in fact three different county zonings that cover that area. So as you go north and west on the property, you have R1L 1, or R1L 35 and R1L 18 as county zones.
I don't have a county map.
Yes, they are. I, I had a map in the first presentation, and actually showed the county designations. I did not include it in this, I don't believe. With that initial creation of technicality zoning, we then move forward into two other aspects. One is a master plan that covers the area. And the master plan is intended to guide development and to put some sort of very broad curves on what can go where. It's not intended to get to the level of detail that you get by zoning. And I will get to the zoning in just a moment. It too is not intended to get to the level of exactly where it ends up. That's another step we can see later. So the AED South master plan actually includes two areas that will come up in discussion, I'm pretty sure later, that are not proposed to be incorporated into the city. They are not contiguous to the city limits on this side, and would create a requirement to do an entirely separate annexation for just those two parcels. So they're covered by the master plan, because the master plan is, will be, through the development agreement, tied to the overall project and its future development. But they're not part of the annexation that's before you to have.
George.
Sir.
Don Mikelet, those two pieces you're talking about, they're going to be zoned open space, but they're not going to be in the city.
They are designated in the master plan to be used for open space. The zoning is whatever the county has in the zone. We do not have the ability to rezone them in the county. So the master plan contemplates them being used for something open-spacy. They are significant accumulation of granite dells. I mean, they're block formations, for the most part. Those areas would, would be controlled by the DA, but not by city zone. So the DA can say, you can't do anything with it in open space, but city zoning doesn't go there.
Who's going to own those two pieces then?
As I understand it, all the area in green will come to the city. I'm sorry, the bright green, not the, not the ugly green that John had.
Well, George's pictures are pretty good. But just to clarify, the city will own all of the, all of that green area that's natural open space. And as George said, the city, the city can, can zone, his own property once it's annexed to the natural open space, it's part of the process, but the county parcel will remain county zoning. Now, it doesn't mean the city couldn't go to the county and ask the county to rezone it to, to some sort of open space that the county has. I don't know, I assume the county has some sort of similar open space. But as George said, the development agreement will, will designate that as permanent open space, and that's part of the, part of the contract. So I don't think, and I think later on, we'll see a presentation. I don't think anybody should be too concerned about that part, those parcels being developed, because they're pretty much vertical, vertical rocks.
So again, there's a difference between this map and the zoning map that follows, because we leave out those two parcels that are not contiguous to the city. The zoning map is a little bit more detailed as to what can be used, in that it creates a density level for development. Brown areas at the top of the map are multifamily development. That would allow a higher intensity, higher density use than the sort of tanish areas in the middle, which are single-family development. And then the, the sort of odd green color here represents the proposed special plan communities zoning that requires a future and separate master plan before development can occur there. So we have multifamily area at the top, remember. On the west side of the development, higher, higher intensity, higher density residential. North of it is industrial zoning. It's actually a very light industrial, it's more a business park type zoning. And then Granite Dells Estates, that's already in the city underneath of the, the map key, high intensity, high density residential. We had a number of questions, either at the meeting, through presentations, or subsequently by email to us. We had a lot of emails. We forwarded those that we could get to you in advance, to you in advance. The ones that came in in the last 24 hours, you got, I believe, hard copies of. The, they often fell into one of these categories, and in most cases, addressed more than one of these categories. There was a great deal of similarity in the comments. And we wanted to address some of those things for you, just to make sure that we're as clear as possible before we move on into the north annexation. A lot of questions about the location and type, aggregate versus separated with the crossing. John touched on that in his presentation. A very important part of that is that the city's control, the city will have control through development agreement of where that crossing occurs. It's unfortunate, because of topography, that the further north you go away from the open space, the flatter it is on both sides of the trail, and therefore, an aggregate crossing is harder, I, I, separated crossing is harder to create. And the further south you go into the open space, the more vertical separation you have, and the crossing is easier as a separated crossing. But that control of the city being able to pick the point lets the city council take the temperature of the problem, make a determination. Do we do aggregate? Do we build an expensive bridge that, that either puts the traffic over or under? Do we build a bridge that puts pedestrians over or under? How, how is that processed later? That's covered in the, in the development agreement, again, giving the city the ability to pick that location. So that's important to keep in mind. Buffering of the trail from future residential development was another key aspect. We had a lot of comments about that. Much of that is going to have to wait until we get to the stage of subdivision plans to be able to see how and where subdivision plans are created. The alternative aspect of just creating a buffer is that you don't know how wide buffer needs to be, don't necessarily need, know where the buildings are Don't necessarily need, know where the buildings are going to go. I can tell you from past experience with other subdivisions in town, it is neither a trail user's desire nor an adjacent homeowner's desire to have the trail go right past the back of the house where you look into their backyard or their back window. Or does the trail user that you have to see the house or look into their backyard at that window? What we've seen in other subdivisions and what we see in subdivision planning practice is that you very often have a process, and we have one in our code called planned area development, that lets you compress density in one area and provide extra open space in another. It's private open space, so it's different than the city's open space that we would acquire through the development agreement of order in seventy-five acres. But it's open space that benefits the development and developer because it makes the properties more valuable and more sellable. If you provide buffer space on the back of properties between their backyard and the trail, people have more privacy in their rear yard and there isn't a market for that. Putting the development rent against the trail is somewhat unusual, although I will have to point out that a portion of Granite Dells Estates does exactly that. Backyards go right up against the trail right of way. They have view fencing so that they made sure through extra effort on the developer's part that people on the trail can look into the backyards and vice versa. But I think you may see a different approach in this particular case because of the terrain and the topography around there. Granite Dells Estates has a view over the trail of some of our iconic peaks, Granite Mountain, friends, that's getting seen from there. It, it is a different situation as you move further south. Those things are alongside of the trail, so to speak, for property owners to intervention. So the idea of having some kind of barrier back there, especially a space barrier in the form of open space, is likely to occur. We won't know that until we start seeing subdivision plans. It is something that we want to put off into the future and maybe determination on. I will point out for everyone's benefit, I know the commission is very well aware of this, subdivision plans come to this commission for public review at the preliminary plan stage before they move on to council for anything else. So you will see every subdivision that's proposed for either the north or the south annexation again in the future. Once more development and design detail have been put into it. At this stage, without the annexation occurring, there's no benefit or reason for that level of detail. The engineering that's required very, very large extents required to develop those plans in downtown. So we won't see them at this stage. We have a lot of questions about the special plan community designation of a resort area. There were suggestions that it not be zoned anything, that it not be zoned SPC, but rather zoned natural open space, which would require a future rezoning. Or that we would have to require a development master plan right now in order to designate the SPC zoning on a property. There are some issues that we think need to be addressed as part of that. One is John very clearly touched on the fact that we have a great deal of control over what goes on there through the future adoption, review, approval, adoption of a master plan. The SPC requires another more detailed master plan of just that zoned area. So we have a master plan that covers the whole annexation and we have another master plan that's just specific to that before development can occur. So the AED owner of the property could leave it empty. They can't build anything on it without that future SPC master plan being approved, recommended by this body and approved by councils. So it comes here and the council. That does several things. First, it keeps the city in the loop as far as approval processes go. Second, it gives the developer some, I'm not sure whether I'm right in front of you, this. Understanding of what his limitations and uses are. He has a right to develop that as a resort. The city in its negotiations obviously wants it developed as a resort. That's a key point of the LOI from both sides. It will be a key point in the development agreement as it goes forward. This gives him the assurance that he can do the resort in the future, whereas not zoning it, which is pretty much off the table because that would bring in as residential zoning, that's what the county zoning is. Or zoning in natural open space leaves him with no security whatsoever that a future council will vote to rezone it to anything else. It also doesn't leave the current city council any security that a future city council won't zone a commercial. And we get something other than a resort there. By establishing the SPC and requiring the future master plan, it gives both sides of, of the question, the negotiations, some security as to what to expect on the property. And one of the key things that resulted from zoning being created in the first place is that it gives potential buyers some security about what's going to happen on that adjacent property. If it's SPC, any advice property in the new AED annexation area, anyone who develops property further south in Granite Dells Estates knows it can be a resort. If you do anything else, then you've left that question open to, I don't want to call them whims, but to the desires or decisions of future councils who may or may not support the open space and the designation of that area for a resort. So that's one of the things that I think John covered in the LOI and that will be covered in great detail in the development agreement. Did you have a question? No? I don't know, I saw Chairman Michael was leaning forward. It was just riveting discussion. Sir?
Back to number one, the location and type of grade crossing on a Beeline Trail?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that it's going to be at the cost of the city?
It's, the location is at the authority of the city, so we get to pick the location.
Okay.
The negotiations of the development agreement as to the cost of who builds it, it's kind of up in the air. I guess that is the developer.
I don't think there's any intent, I can say this, I don't think there's any intent for the city to pay for the infrastructure. You know, the, the LOI talks about all the infrastructure, streets, water, sewer, all that, all that's paid for by developer. In addition, the developer, or ultimately the home builder, home buyer pays impact fees as well to cover other things in the city.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, you said that.
No problem.
You want some SPC? Let me just make one, one comment about the SPC and, and the use of the term master plan. I, I don't think, it may be confusing for people because we hear about the charter asking the commission to make a recommendation on a master plan for the annexation. And that's a, and even though the words are exactly the same when it comes to our SPC zoning requiring a master plan, it, they're really two different things. What, what you saw before on this two dimensional map that shows the different colors, the natural open space below, the kind of yellow and then the orange, that's sufficient for a charter level master plan for the south. And then ultimately you'll see more annexation. That's the master plan when it comes to the charter. And unfortunately, when, when you have sort of these initiatives drafted, citizen driven sort of initiatives drafted, they don't sort of go through the same vetting process that you would have, let's say, when you're writing a legislation through, through a process and going through council. So master plan, the word was used, it was not defined. But the two dimensional document, the eight half by eleven document you saw that shows the parcels, that's a sufficient master plan for that annexation purposes, the charter purposes. The SPC zoning master plan, as George is talking about, is going to be much more detailed. So our land development code, the term master plan is, is site plan, it may be elevations. And in this case, it most likely will be elevations because remember, we're talking about a 200 room or 200 unit resort that blends into the environment. So we're probably going to ask for some sort of elevations. We're going to ask for where parking is going to go, how to park it, the screen. So it's going to be much more detailed documents. So I want to make sure everybody's not confused by the term master plan. They're very different when it comes to zoning, when it comes to SPC.
Thanks, John. I shouldn't have touched on that. We actually have pages of requirements for the SPC master plan in the land development code that you all have. So that, that is something when it comes in later, we'll have a great deal of details required that are not required by the charter. And John's correct, the charter just used a term that didn't define it more thoroughly, the proposition, used a term that didn't define it. We had a number of questions relating to noise mitigation upon construction in areas of overflight. You heard from our airport director and you'll hear from her again a little bit later on, on both the north and south issues associated with that. Noise mitigation is a requirement of the airport specific area plan, which the city adopted way back in 2001. We have used that for rezonings and master plans and annexations ever since to make sure that properties are identified that need noise mitigation in the construction. And property owners are properly noticed ahead of time that they're buying a house that planes are going to fly over. They wouldn't go so far as to do my suggestion of naming all the streets by airline names. Which would help, I think. But, but these things have been and are proposed to continue through the process with this particular set of annexations. So the very north end of the south annexation and much of the west side of the north annexation are subject to airport specific area plan requirements. And Airport Director Sabato will talk to you about those a little bit later in the slide presentation. It's in this section relating to the north, but she addresses both north and south in regard to that. So we will take care of noise mitigation as part of the city's codes and as part of the airport specific area plan requirements. One other thing, we do have language in the land development code associated with how to mitigate noise if you're in an overflight area. So we actually have zoning requirements that follow sort of beneath the, the overall umbrella of the Astat requirements. So we, we have several layers of requirements to address that. One of the, one of the speakers at the last meeting, a caller, threw out a very large number of homes to be developed in the airport area. I think the number they threw out was thirty or fifty thousand. That's rather ridiculously high. What we've given you in staff report were the exact numbers based on the maximum density allowed at the old ranch, the maximum density requested here and the maximum densities that were already approved in other subdivisions in the area. And it comes out roughly twelve thousand, thirteen thousand as a maximum. What we've seen typically in development is you don't reach the maximum. Eighty percent of the maximum seems to be a common number. We obviously can't hold the developer to that if they're allowed ten thousand homes, they could build ten thousand homes, presuming they need all of the requirements. That's where we normally see that reduction occur. You have to have streets, you have to have parks, you have to have open spaces. People don't buy in neighborhoods that don't have open spaces in the many part. And if you don't have those things, you may not be able to get your, your development completed. So you often see a larger area occur, a larger area of open spaces or other uses occur that reduce the density somewhat. So assuming everyone builds to the max, that twelve thousand five, and I call that, I don't have the specific number in front of me, that we quote you in the staff report would be the maximum. Under this annexation, the, these two annexations and those that are already in the city. If, future annexations certainly could happen and if they happen, that density number or the maximum density number could change. We had a flurry of emails asking how multifamily, no, they weren't asking, they were saying that we should measure multifamily density in a certain way. There is only, I've been doing this for 30 years. There is only one way to measure density. It's by dwelling unit. You don't have buildings, you count individual units. It's an apartment building with twenty apartments in it, that's twenty units. There is no other way that, that's used typically by any municipality that I've looked at calculated any other way. So when John mentioned the AED South being limited to a maximum number of units by their master plan and by their zoning, that number of units is units. It's whether it's a house that counts as one, an apartment dwelling counts as one, condominium unit counts as one. Each of them count as one. So we're not counting buildings with four units as one. Just wanted to be clear, that one made me laugh because I've never heard of any other calculation process. The next one didn't make me laugh. The archaeological sites and how they're going to be addressed them. So to punish you for asking that question, I'm going to read you the Antiquities Act of 1906. What we simply have this slide and it's important to look at just briefly, is that there are a whole series of federal and state requirements to protect, mitigate a document, archaeological sites. None of those things would necessarily preserve the site in place as it is, though that is the first choice that's pressed by both the city. And we do have a person on staff who, whose job is to protect these cultural resources. But sometimes you just can't. Development is going to impact sites. And when it does, there are a whole series of mitigation requirements that are necessary. They're required by the Antiquities Act and subsequent acts by the National Park Service and by the state of Arizona and by some local code requirements. We have some things in our land development code that actually add to what's already required. Just for general information, in doing some research on archaeology as a result of all these comments about the archaeological site, there was a survey done of AED South back in 2006. That archaeological survey was done by previous owners for previous development, totally different reason. They last forever, but it is a survey of historical sites. So in theory, historical sites shouldn't change. So we shouldn't have to do a new survey to find out if there's more historical sites that went there last time. But it, it looked at all of the area of AED South from the industrial area of the north all the way down to the Granite Dells. The Dells, the areas that are to be conveyed to the city as open space. And in that area, there are more than two dozen archaeological sites. And they range from, from surface scattered materials to what possibly are structures that could have been dwelling units. There, there are a number of things that are, are part of that. Sixty-five percent of those are historical in nature, are not prehistoric sites. So these are after Prescott's initial founding during the development process around the area associated with the railroad, the railroad ran through here, the Beeline Trail is a rail line. Many of the things that were found are historical. Thirty-five percent of those are prehistoric sites. So they relate back to the Native Americans who lived here prior or, or lived here during that same time period. The sites are protected by federal law. We have a study with maps in it to show where it is. I'm not allowed to look at it. Only our archaeological folks are allowed to look at it. It's provided to the developer. The developer has to address and mitigate these sites as requested or as recommended in the study. So the study has looked at all of the sites in the south area, all, more than two dozen. And with each one of them, there is a recommendation on what to do with that site. Mitigate it by documentation and transfer materials to Sherwood Hall Museum or to one of the local tribes. Leave it alone. Again, that's typically the first recommendation. Leave it alone, build around it, make it part of an open space planned area development. And I mentioned that in the staff report too. Similar to the trail bunker, you can do the same thing with archaeological sites. We have them all over Prescott. Granite Dells Estates, the development just to the north, nearly the same number of archaeological sites. Prescott Lakes, major development in, in the central part of town, many archaeological sites. Most were mitigated, many were left in the parks within the development. All of them were surveyed and all of them were, were addressed in some fashion. There are so many layers of requirements that, that have to apply later that the developer wants to take into account. Those things are generally taken into account. In fact, we don't even require the archaeological survey until you're at the next step after what we're talking about today, at a subdivision plan. We require you have an archaeological study at the time, you submit a preliminary plan to the city. In this case, they have one. They can design their subdivisions based on this because they have it already. Typically, we make them stop their subdivision design, do an archaeological study, and then finish this, the subdivision design to account for the archaeology. So it's something that we're definitely going to have to address along the way. It will come up, it'll be in staff review. We are not going to bring you a map and not going to tell you where the artifacts are. We're going to tell the developer and he's going to be signing around. So that's something to keep in mind. So, that's something to keep in mind. AED North doesn't appear to have any survey done. So, any residential development up there, any of the commercial development, anything associated with subdivision plan in the north will require a future survey. That survey will do the same thing that the existing survey does for the south. When it comes to locations, recommend avoidance mitigation. I was a lot.
George Tomhugson here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
George, who adjudicates the archaeological survey? Who, what, talk about the teeth that are in the system to keep everybody honest.
So, the surveys are done under the whole set of rules that we address on this slide, starting with the Antiquities Act of nineteen oh six, nineteen years ago. And it's administered through the State Department of Historic Preservation, affectionately known as SHIBA, State Historic Preservation Office. They have the teeth and they have the authority to accept or not accept the survey and its recommendations. So, what happens is the city, in this case, Prescott being somewhat of a special case. There are a number of certified local governments actually have a very good influence there. In other cities that aren't certified local governments, all the survey and all the mitigation and all the determination goes through to the State Historic Preservation Office. They handle all of it. In our case, we have additional influence because we have a local certification that we are qualified, being the original capital of Arizona, helpless yet.
And what would that influence, what would that influence include?
In our case, it includes the ability to subdivide through the PAD process, which many cities don't have. So, we would allow a developer to avoid a site by providing them the PAD opportunity and potentially providing them an increase in density in one area or a decrease in density in another to protect an archaeological site. We just can't tell you that's why they're doing that. We can tell you that it's an open space area for good purpose.
So, they get a citation or they get, do they get stopped? Do they get, do they go to court? What happens, what happens if, what happens if the?
They violate the requirements, they're subject to fines under both state and federal law. They're in violation of state statutes, they're in violation of several of these acts that I have up on the screen today. They are subject to fairly significant penalties, both at state and federal. Hopefully, that answered.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, again, we hit you with a lot of things, so I want to go back to reminding you of what you're here for. You have to make a recommendation on the initial zoning, you have to make a recommendation on the master plan, and you have to make a recommendation on the rezoning in order to move the process on the city council. I want to be clear, I'm not requiring you to do this today, just keep reminding you of what your three parts of this are. So, we can move into AED.
About an hour and a half before we start into the north, and so we don't interrupt our flow of information there, because we want to take a ten-minute break.
Yes.
Okay. Then we will have a ten-minute break and we will resume at.
Airport Joe. Yeah, thank you. Giving actually a few to the folks at Prescott Medias.
George, did you unmute?
Yes, it's unmuted.
So, let me go back to the presentation. With the opposite of what I intended to do, I started all over. So, we haven't had much discussion about the.
MC's not back yet.
I see. Now we are, thank you. So, the AED North annexation, I'm going to run through kind of what we did last meeting and just hit some of the high points for AED North and then get into a little bit further detail. And we'll turn it over to the airport director to talk a little bit more about the airport-specific area plan, everyone calls it ASAP. And then we'll move from there to potential motions or potential actions by the commission. And then ultimately, you will want to take public comment, and we do have the developer here. And I failed to ask him last time, he preferred to speak after the public comment. I don't know if that's still the case. This time, I will check with him as we move on. I think one thing that we talked about previously, and I'm going to back up the slides just because I'm going to make sure I talk longer than John did. On the questions and comments, some of the email comments made reference to the planning department or the community developing department making decisions in regard to this. I think they were, it's a terminology issue, they're talking about this body. It's the planning and zoning commission that will make recommendations. And again, their job is to recommend to council on various things, to make those recommendations. So, it's not city staff moving things forward, it would be this commission moving things forward. Just to make sure that we're absolutely clear, I wanted to address all of those, but that was something that came in on a couple of emails after I created this slide. So, just to give a general location, in case anyone didn't know it, we have an airport. AED North is right next to the airport, it's east of the airport, north of eighty-nine A, State Route eighty-nine A. The area is dissected, a portion of this, and you'll see later when we look at the zoning and the master plan, dissected by Granite Creek Park or Granite Creek Wash. And most of the residential development occurs east of that. In fact, a lot of the residential development occurs east of that. This overall map lets you also see the relationship and the fact that the two annexations do not continue as to one another and therefore are two annexations. So, the area of AED North takes access from the same interchange at Granite Dells Parkway as the initial access will take for AED South. That interchange was created, designed and created for the purpose of developments of these two areas. It was initially planned way back when the A prior owner, prior to AED, was attempting to negotiate with the city to annex ten thousand acres of property into Prescott in one large annexation. And that initial design began back assuming that those developments were occurring. The developments didn't occur, the company that owned the property is gone, but the intersection, the interchange was constructed, was developed. And it was there as a precursor to allow for future connectivity. So, we talked a little bit in the south, John specifically, City Attorney specifically mentioned it in the south, that the city's been collecting impact fees and will continue to collect impact fees to create a crossing from the Fippen Museum roundabout through Walden Range across through and to AED South into and through Granite Dells Estates, back to that intersection. Basically creating an L-shaped loop road that connects this interchange to the one at the Fippen Roundabout on State Route eighty-nine. That's the long-term goal. Obviously, we want to see that happen at some point in the near future because of the development that's occurring out here. So, in this particular case, the initial access will only be from that interchange. And it will go north through the right of way that will be created across property that's already in the city and under the ownership of AED to the area that's proposed to be annexed. Again, just a little bit closer view, that's Granite Dells Parkway Interchange. You can see the top edge of Granite Dells subdivision in the bottom of the picture, and I went to extra effect to get arrows on this one to point north and south. One of the things that will help, I think, a lot with the review of this, and I know several of you have asked specifically because the location of AED North and the lack of any roadways leading to it or near it is to do a little bit of a photographic tour. And we've done that through a process that will allow us to take a map, click locations on that map and actually see panoramic pictures from those locations. So, if you'll indulge me a moment, I've always wanted to be a tour guide, especially I've never wanted to be a tour guide. The zoning that's proposed, and we'll talk about a little bit later, is shown on this map, and I will talk to you a little bit about it. But I need to give you a little preview of it with the presentation. This area is designated MU, mixed use. That allows for residential, but mostly commercial type uses. That designation typically is like medical office or neighborhood type businesses, coffee shops or laundromat, things that are something that nearby residential properties would need. The area immediately north of it is IT, that's industrial transition, is a very light industrial area. And that type of use is often, that type of designation is often used for things like RV or mini storage, which would provide another service, a large residential development, good demand. This is the wash. On the other side of the wash and disconnected from this property, it will be accessed through the already existing industrial development here. This is inside the city, already developed in industrial capacity. Roadways are stoked to properties here and to the northern one, which I'll show you on a different map, to provide those areas. Now, IG designation allows for most industrial type uses, it does not allow residential uses. It is the same designation as some of the heavier industrial designations the city has off of State Route eighty-nine near the reservation and also in the area of the airport, north of this location, is already in the city. As you're entering the property direction, it'll come up through here. So, that roadway extension that we looked at from the interchange would cross property that belongs to AED down here, enter here, and then follow this way into the subdivision. So, we'll look at that on the master plan. But that roadway actually runs through here and the interchange is actually off the screen down here. So, picking the first location within the subdivision, you can get a panoramic view. So, we're on the mixed use property looking north. The industrial area is across it, Granite Creek Wash, this is Granite Creek Wash. The airport is back here, behind it. There's more in downtown here, down here. State Route eighty-nine A runs just off the picture there. And the interchange where access will occur is down here. East of that is a larger area that we'll see better from the next picture to the lower. Hop up there. So, we were here, north, crossroad, pre-industrial area that's already existing. Down here is State Route eighty-nine, and then that interchange is somewhere around about where that photograph is. This is supposed to be industrial transition, light industrial, but industrial uses. Again, if you look west, you have the same boundaries, the wash, you have the airport, the industrial area and then the airport. Key to this one is if you look at this direction, so we're now facing mostly east. You see the multifamily designation or the MH designation. This area is the residential area that's shown on the master plan. So, you can see the type of topography you're talking about for that type of development is very flat. And for Prescott, this is a parking lot flat. And it's ideal for higher intensity development where you don't have a lot of topography that has to be modified for the development. So, you see flat areas typically having higher intensity, higher density residential development. So, we're going to move to the next map to north. So, we were just looking at that area, let me go back to this one just real quick. We were looking at this area for the residential development. So, now we're going to jump just a little bit to the north of that. Again, you have a very large area, wash that runs through Granite Creek Wash. You have the airport impact area up here, which John talked about. While it's showing a different color on this map, it's actually proposed, and you'll see on the proposed zoning map, to be natural open space. Again, to prevent development occurring at the end of the runway, to give the city the leeway and flexibility that's necessary to extend the runway, to continue to operate the airport without having any kind of direct impacts like this now. But the other area of industrial general that I talked about is this one. This is the area that John mentioned in his presentation of having potential through-the-fence agreements that would allow business that's aircraft-related or airport-related to actually be able to move aircraft back and forth between the two parcels, onto the airport, off of the airport. It's industrial zoning to allow heavier intensity uses, which is what we see all around the airport. We have Ruger gun manufacturer along there. We have a number of industrial developments along here that are very successful. So, that area again would have access only from this side through existing streets that are already planted in the subdivision.
Yes, sir.
To the north there of the airport impact that will cut out there, is that county and is that in the city?
That's actually already in the city. So, this area is a bit of an infill right here. So, there is a APS solar farm, I believe, right there. I believe we have our public works director in the room saying, want to make sure that we show off the airport wastewater treatment facility, reformation facility. This is, this is the type of industrial uses we see throughout the area. So, making that, excuse me, making that designation an industrial general makes sense from the perspective of existing neighbors. So, industrial, more industrial wastewater facility, all of that makes sense to make this an industrial center. So, I'm going to end this one, hopefully be able to go back to my. Taking more things to that. All right, now I'm lost. Let me find my presentation again. Okay, so we're back to the presentation and. So, we stopped at this point to give you a look, so you can see the property that you can't see otherwise. But we're going to go on and talk a little bit about the rest of the process that we need to look at. So, the initial, again, responsibility of this body is to make a determination on the city equivalent to the county zone. In the case of AED North, all of it is RCU two A. We talked about that previously, that's a residential, it's sort of a holding pattern type of use that requires a residential loan, they have two-acre lots. The city equivalent to that is rural estate, two acre, that would be the initial designation. The area is covered by the city's general plan, just like the south is covered by the general plan. We do see areas in here that indicate commercial industrial uses, industrial uses, more industrial uses. The creek has open space. This area, while designated as industrial, is actually part of that upper area that AED North will connect to the city. It'll be open space instead of industrial. This area will be a combination of open space and residential uses. This is the residential area that we saw that looks relatively flat from standing on the industrial transitions zone, which is right there. This is the master plan, and you have. This is the master plan, and you have a better copy of this in the materials we sent you. Basically shows these areas, the impact area to be conveyed to the city in one form or another. Again, will be zoned open space, and I'll show you that on this other map. The creek bed itself in open space, the industrial areas adjacent to the airport, the mixed use to provide neighborhood services to this development, the light industrial area to provide services for this development, and then the residential development of up to 1,550 units, again, whether they're multifamily or a single family, each one counts as a unit, in this area. I can tell you that just based on the layout of this master plan, this is more detailed than we normally get at this stage of a master plan. This is almost the kind of detail that we see with the SPC zoning on the south here. These are planned area development subdivisions. They are taking advantage of the fact that they can set aside open space, condense development into smaller areas, protecting land and providing open space to residents of the neighborhood who would have to drive otherwise to another location to get the same services, the same open space. So that's, that's not at all unlike what you'll see for developments in the south if they follow the PAD planned area development process, which I would hope they do. Again, the zoning, this area is proposed for a single family, six with an MH overlay. The MH means that the developer could place in certain parts of this area manufactured home subdivision instead of a site-built home subdivision. That's subject to further negotiation as we move forward. That is one thing that has been involved in this process from the initial supplemental, wanting to be able to put some manufactured housing in this area within manufactured housing subdivisions. The mixed use area and the IT area, we showed you on the aerial photo, and this area initially was shown as airport impact, it now shows as in a west, which is natural open space, then to protect that from any development to occur, it's the same zoning as the creek on Granite Creek Wash. Airport-specific area plan, as I mentioned before, thoroughly covers this area. You heard from Robin Sabata, our airport director, last time on the impacts on the south annexation, and we're going to turn this over to her for a review of the impacts on the north annexation, and then we can take questions along the way if you have.
I feel like saying good afternoon because we've been here so long. Good morning Chairman Michael Lynn, and also the rest of the planning and zoning members. I appreciate the time. So we did get introduced to the airport-specific area plan, and obviously you all know the airport's very close to these developments, so it's really important that we mesh the two areas together. So just as a refresher, you're making decisions regarding future uses of development in the vicinity of the airport, so you do have a requirement to take into consideration the ASAP recommendations. Just as a little backstory, it was adopted back in 2001, it's been amended nine additional times, mended, embryo-fermed, and in that case, six of those were associated with major developments, including Walden Farms, Granite Dells, and also the Deepwell project. So it's very common for us to be discussing this now, and then it goes simultaneously to the council with any changes that are recommended to be made and to be from the ASAP. The ASAP contains a land use plan, that's referred to as Figure Six, and also it has airport impact zones, and a 60 DNL noise contour, which we'll be looking at again, and then also it does refer to the airport influence area, which are the easement areas. There are three main purposes, to limit damage in case there's an aircraft accident, to protect airport viability, and that's not just on airport, but it's also for the economic viability of the areas around the airport, because airports are considered a major economic engine, and we want to help to preserve that. And then to also limit the impact of overflight and noise, because we're nice people and we want people to be able to live underneath the noise areas and still be able to conduct normal lives, sleep, do homework, things like that. We also have an additional grant requirement, and that is, the airport sponsor must take appropriate action to the extent reasonable, including adoption zoning laws, to restrict the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport to activities and purposes, and this is the key term, compatible with normal airport operations. So when I use the term "normal airport operations," it's to continue the operations that we have essentially enjoyed for many, many years. The grant requirement is required, it's a little string, it's an assurance associated with our grant requirements. So in the last, since I arrived back in February of 2018 through today, we have received more than $24 million in grants. We anticipate over the next five years to receive as much as $75 to $80 million in additional grants, so we are looking at being one of the major grant recipients for airport our size in the entire Western Pacific region, and so the FAA is watching what we're doing here. So here are the impact zones, so you're going to just sort of refresh yourself, there's six airport impact zones on the map right here, you can see there's a little, you can see there's little numbers, the sixes here, this is off the end of the runway, there's the numbers associated with each of these areas. And then inside it, you'll see this red line, and that is the 60 DNL noise contour. So just to give you an idea what that means, that is an average sound level. So let me show you an example, I'm going to make a noise, I just made a noise, right? This particular sound level, when it measures, takes that noise and it averages out over 24 hours. And that's how we get the DNL sound contour. It is not comprised of a single overflight or a single event, it is a modeled contour, is not actually measured by flight tracking that occurs. This is a artist modeling of what the noise should be based on the type of aircraft that are flying, the number of operations, and the bundling, and that's why you have the points at the end, it's where the modeler bundled it when it came out. So this is a modeler's conception, and it was accepted, and it's using the FAA methodology to create that. These different areas have different requirements associated with them. So for impact zones one through five down here, as well as the 60 DNL contour, the ASAP calls for no residential whatsoever. One exception has been student dorms that were approved back in 2003, and it had to do with if Embry-Riddle wanted to add some dorms in an area, it's never been acted on. If you are in Zone Six, which is the area at the outer side of the blue, that is not specified as a 54321, habitable buildings must be constructed using noise attenuation techniques to limit noise within each structure, and the noise level is 45 decibels. The interior sound level of the structure would be noise attenuated down to a 45 decibel level. And the reason that's important is normal human speech is 45 decibels. And to give you an example, if a general aviation aircraft overflies you at 1,000 feet, the approximate decibel level based on produced study is 88 decibels. So we're taking an 88 decibel event at 1,000 feet, and we're noise attenuated inside the home structure down to 45 decibels for a single event. Does that seem clear? Yeah? Okay. So those are two layers, we've got no residential in one through five, and the 60 DNL, and in six, down to those other areas, it is down to a level of 45 decibels. Sorry. There we go. So when we look here, we can see that in the AED South, the very tip end of this actually goes into the, right here, into what is the Zone Six area. As we go up to AED North, here's the edge of Zone Six, and it carries through all the way into this area, and then you can see the rest of it where it falls. Right here, you can't see the four, but the four's coming out, off the end of the runway, the four is right here. So those are where the impact zones are. And just to note, currently, the developer is not proposing any residential units within the 60 DNL, and to our knowledge, within these two north and south parcels, they are not proposing any to be within the 60 DNL or within Zone Six at this time that we are aware of. But we want to make sure to include that, because if there's any adaptations, then it will fall under these rules. So there is a third level, a tertiary level of protection that's provided in the airport-specific area plan. It's referred to as an influence area. And so what it did when it passed in 2001 is it says, everybody who lives in any one of these sections will be notified by navigation easement that they're in a very noisy area. Constant overflight, the navigation easement actually says that noise will increase, and in fact, we expect ours will as well. Down here, the recommendation in the ASAP is that habitable buildings outside of the six airport impact zones, but falling with this, within this entire AIA, also be constructed using noise attenuation techniques to limit noise within the structure. A noise level is not specified, it simply says that you are to do noise attenuation techniques. How this was accomplished with the Deepwell process is, there was actually a page and a half of 12 items on the first page and eight items on the next page, and it says, homes within these areas will do the following things, like have solid corridors, dual painting windows, so there's a laundry list of things that occur when you're in the entire influence area. So we've learned about three areas, the one through five in the DNL, 60, which is no homes, a second area within the six impact area, Zone Six, which is 45 decibel interior sound mitigation, and then outside, which is the entire area you see up here, which is constructed using noise attenuation techniques. It is my understanding that these will be addressed in the DA. So we did look at models, and we did look at diagrammed areas. What we've also provided here is, this is actually a diagram of a fourth area, this area, so you can just see the third area right here, where everybody signs navigation easements established back in 2001. This fourth area was established via Arizona revised statutes, and this is actually called the flight traffic patterns or the public disclosure map for the airport, so public airport disclosure map. So you can see that there's many overlays. This is what's posted on the Arizona real estate website to notify people that you are in the territory of an airport. So what we did is we took actual flight tracks from 2019, and we created this, this is actually 91,000 of the 231,000 flight tracks, because it has to be, it's a radar tracks that are available. And it shows you that even though people are given all these notifications of all this impact and overflight, that there are plenty of areas, including these dark blue areas here and here, dark red areas, heavy overflight, all these dark areas here, that are actually outside of all the notification boxes, all the easement areas, and there still is ample overflight over those areas. Based on the operations that we have in the meeting we had with one of our largest flight training institutions last week, we will probably be getting next year to 300,000 aircraft operations. We will move from the 45th busiest airport in the country to the top 35 busiest airport in the country. And to put it into context, there's 20,000 airports in the country, 500 of them are commercial service airports. We're in that very, very top percentage of extremely busy operations, and it's important because the economic impact of the airport is $116 billion a year, and a lot of that is because we bring in the flight training institutions and the students who train with us. So here specifically is AED North, and in blue, you can see this is the area we've been discussing all day. Very specific, what I've done here is try to overlay all the boxes, so you can see every impact that's noted. And in the background, you have flight tracking, so you can see where the flights have flown, so you can kind of see the pattern very clearly here, the pattern elevation. Usually the pattern elevation is at 1,000 feet, but aircraft can be lower than that because if they're in the active takeoff and landing, they could be anything below that. The other thing to note is that within the airport area, 75% of our operations do stay within the pattern because it's training, at most airports, less than 25% of the aircraft generally stay within the pattern. So we have a lot of overflight. So as you can see from this diagram, this is the area, this is section 29 right here, this is the area where the proposed school or park is, which I didn't notice a concern. I'd like to go through what we see here. The airport sees on balance that this proposal, this development is good, because it does provide this additional area for the airport to grow, and it needs to expand. We just received a letter from SkyWest Airlines last week, it's good news, they intend to not only stay at Prescott for an extended period of time, but it does look like they will be upgauging their aircraft within three to five years from the current CRJ 200 to an Embraer 170 or 175, or a CRJ 700 or 900. They are similar in noise impact, so we don't expect to see an increase in noise, and in fact, they're more powerful, so they might help out with those summer takeoffs, you know, when the performance is not as good as it is in the winter time because of the hot and high elevation of the airport. So we do see the long-term presence, but still the air carrier only constitutes fewer than, right now, 1% of the total operations at the airport. The vast majority of our operations are general aviation, and when we have a really active fighter season, it is the tankers. So I think one of you was interested in the tanker, well, the largest aircraft that we have operating out of here, and right now, is an MD-87, 187,000 pounds, maximum gross takeoff weight. To give you an idea, that and the 737 that they might use for forest service operations, that aircraft is probably at about one mile out, would be a decibel level of 97 decibels, just to give you an idea of what that would be. So for AED North, we see great benefit for not only the runway extension, but I give credit to AED and for our city leadership, and including additional area up here for what we call approach protection. To clarify, John Palladini mentioned that this area in here would be acquired by the city, but it is on track to be actually compensated, the city to be reimbursed for that money in about two years. Through the airport improvement program, we have a set of money, an amount of money set aside for that acquisition of this 131 acres in here, the rest of it is going to be donated, which is lovely. So under the ASAP, the requirements would be that there would be a requirement for continued airspace and obstruction analysis, they can't build a building in here that's going to be, you know, 10 stories or something. A continued requirement for the navigation easements for inside this turquoise box right here, anything inside this has an navigation easement, so everything from this area all the way through. It requires residential interior sound mitigation, anything within the six would be at the 45 decibel interior sound level, anything out here would be, as we had said previously, would be at, constructed using noise attenuation techniques to limit noise within each structure, and that is to be specified within the DA. Additional recommendations are, if there is going to be a school in here, that it is mitigated down to an interior sound level of 45 decibels, that's what's recommended by the National Institutes of Health, and also the Department of Transportation and its airport cooperative research studies to help promote good learning within a classroom. It also might be a park, it's simply said it's proposed. We have recommended that we should as far back into the parcel when they finally do their final layout, so that it can be further away, because as you can see, this is only two months worth of overflight. You can see a little white in here, we showed just two representative months, May and October of 2019, and this is all, this is 40% of those overflights that occurred. There's a little bit of white back here, so it means there's less overflight, there's quite a bit of overflight here, so we are concerned about much more sound affecting these parcels. In addition, we do recommend that you adjust Figure Six, the residential densities out here are showing very low to low, and they will be showing increased densities, but they will, obviously, we hope to be, that there's some proof. And then also in the airport approach area, there is rezoning that's being recommended for that compatible, so that structures will not be built or compatibility uses will not be seen in that area. So when we talk about adjusting Figure Six in the ASAP, it is this figure that would be adjusted. And because, I believe this is the end, I just want to make sure that we've got the same list of requirements for AED South, so obstruction analyses will continue to be required, navigation easements, interior soundproofing, again, this entire area down here has that additional soundproofing, this one is the one down to 45, this is the one that will be specified within the DA. Then we'll be adjusting land use, because there is some commercial up there, it's going to be adjusted to multifamily up here, and then also the habitable structure interior sound mitigation. This one in the north actually did have also some wording in the DA about the TTF. The TTF is actually not a right, it's a privilege, it's a license agreement essentially between users, and so therefore, that gets negotiated, and FAA has to approve it. So with that in mind, I do agree with George's comment. Something just happened. I do hope that we don't name the streets in this area Serenity Way, because when we get a noise complaint from Tranquility Place and Serenity Way or Lone Elk Drive, you can kind of see where people maybe thought it was going to be quite calm. Average ambient noise level in a rural area is only 30 decibels, so you can see why something like this could be not something that somebody would expect. So I understand today we don't have a motion on the table, but I do believe there's going to be a discussion later about a possible action for staff, and that action will include the amendment of Figure Six, while we note that all the other ASAP recommendations and requirements remain in force, including habitable building interior sound mitigation, residential prohibitions in the areas I've discussed, the requirement for navigation easements, as well as continued compliance with unavoidable airspace regulations and not impacting normal aircraft operations.
Any questions for Robin?
Any questions for Robin?
Thank you very much, very detailed.
Did you want that? You had asked for this.
Why don't you explain what we got here, please?
Okay.
Just briefly.
Okay. So at the request, could you put it down just smaller?
Yeah, Tom, Tom Hodgson here, I have a question for Robin.
Yes, sir.
Robert, for the benefit of the commissioners and anybody else that's listening that may not completely understand about sound, give us, can you give us a feel of what 45 decibels in our normal life sounds like?
Absolutely, 45 decibels is actually normal human speech. Unless you're a really animated person, it might get to 50 decibels. But generally, a conversation is 45 decibels and that's. What's that?
Your question, the five-year-old.
Yes, that's your five-year-old, there's an exception. So that's, and realize that it's sort of hard to understand, but decibels are measured in a logarithmic way. So it's exponentially greater like this makes. So if you're going from 60 to 70 decibels, it's not just a slight increase, it's an exponential increase. Does that help?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for pointing that out.
And single event is not the same as the cumulative DNL, day and night average sound level. Just to give you an idea of what the EPA feels, this is an acceptable interior sound level. It came out with its document in 1974 called the Levels Document. And it said it shouldn't be within a 55 DNL noise contour if you want a reasonable margin of safety. The FAA settled on a 65 for purchase of homes because that's all they could afford. But that was generally based on HUD data, which is interior, you know, urban area, which has a much higher ambient sound level. So even the different agencies differ from what's considered healthy. So what we have in front of you right now is approach runway, the airport runway approach patterns. This is just approach, this is not departure. And the chairman requested that I, that I share this because it is actually part of the ASAP. So you can see this does show where all the overflight will be. And let's just see if I can find 29.
Just to, just to note that the people on the Zoom cannot see what you're showing because it's not on the PowerPoint.
So this is, this is the residential area that's being proposed right here.
Okay. If no further questions from Robin, again, thank you. Appreciate this and I think we'll be seeing you in the future again too.
Thank you, sir.
George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've talked about some very important things. Not only the zoning and the master plan and land use, but the already existing land use controls we have in the area. So the ASAP plan has been something that we've been very carefully trying to keep up to date with developments. When something happens and we need to change it, we have gone back through the process of changing it. I'm going to give you the slide again. This is like the fourth time you've said this to me. There are three things that you are required to do by statute or by charter. Basically, initial cities or initial zoning from the county, master plan approval, get through the 60-day process for top 400, and then the rezoning request that's before. There is an additional option to direct staff to work with the airport to bring you back the amendment ASAP that the airport director thinks would be appropriate to make sure the document stays up to date. That's something that can be done over the 60-day period. It's something that could be sent to and approved by city council after your review and recommendation at the same time as the annexation. I will note that, that the land use designations that were shown in the airport-specific area plan were done under a different criteria than our zoning or general plan. There's more flexibility in the general plan and zoning to allow aggregation of uses in one area and still count the density as the overall area. So if it's 100 acres, we count 100 acres. If you allow one unit per acre, you get 100 units. You can put them in a 20-acre area and the remainder 80% is open space. Under ASAP, the concept is slightly different. It's more restrictive that the uses have to be in particular areas. So it is appropriate to amend it to match up with the first development. So we're going to ask you to consider that at the end of the presentation as an additional, not required, but potential action that will result in the ASAP amendment. Coming back to you in a future meeting.
And George, then certainly, this will not interfere with the 60-day notice.
No, this actually can occur during that process. It's not part of the annexation requirements of either the charter or the statutes. It's something that's under city codes and we would want to pursue that separately.
Thank you.
We have prepared motions for you, but I know we also have another presentation from Walt Anderson, who gave you a presentation last time. And we certainly are going to have some comments from the public. So I'm going to hold these slides and I'm going to switch over if it's okay with you to Walt Anderson's slide. And Candy is Walt on the line?
Well, Mr. Chairman, too, at this point, Mr. Chairman, over here. At this point, if you're going to go, you might as well go to a, open the public hearing because that's what this would amount to. So at this point, if the commission has no official comments or questions for staff, then we can go to the public hearing portion, take care of that, and then bring it back to you all.
All right, while we, are any questions from the commission of the presentation from George? If not, Mr. Geese, would you want to talk before or after the public comments?
Doesn't matter to me. You guys have questions for me, I'm happy to talk now. I don't have a presentation.
Okay, I have a question. Yes, we do have a question here for us.
Good morning, Jason Geese, 93 East Hurley. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Geese. There's been an awful lot of comments within the commission and public regarding the access and the number of crossings of P-Vine Trail and exactly what it is you plan to utilize in crossing the P-Vine. Have you made a decision on that yet?
George is trying to help me out with a map. I have a recommendation. I don't think the decision is mine to make. So with the map on the screen presently, when we look at H and K. As I said in our last meeting, I doubt very highly that we're going to push a access point to the south into the natural open space so that we can go underneath the trail. The obvious opportunity on the ground is right at the corner of H and K where the P-Vine Trail exists. That location lends itself to an at-grade crossing. The other crossings on the trail are at-grade presently in the neighborhood. And so what we have in our letter of intent is an at-grade crossing. What I believe will happen as the development agreement rolls out and, and becomes the document that governs our, our deal, is that the pedestrian traffic would go over the top of the vehicular traffic. Makes a lot more sense to take the pedestrians over the top versus the vehicles. So I think it ends up being a bridge at the corner of H and K with hikers, bikers, runners, and horses going over the top.
So what you're proposing or suggesting is an elevated P-Vine trail over the area where the traffic will be going underneath.
That's correct.
So like you said, it's just simply a bridge that can be used by pedestrians and horses and bike riders.
Much cheaper to take those users over the top because of the weight. It doesn't have to be such a large structure.
Okay, and that was the question was how many? And if you're going to do that, it doesn't make any difference because my next question was, have you quantified the number of crossings that will occur from going from H to K to get to the hotel and back when it's operating at full strength for 200 rooms?
We have not quantified that yet, no.
Would that make any difference to your decision? I'm guessing it's got to be four, five, 600 crossings a day.
I wouldn't know. Road 39, I think that's Dell's Ranch Road. How many, does anybody know how many crossings we have a day there for the present?
I don't know that.
Presently, we probably have, I'm guessing, 600 to 700 residents. So when we start to look at a 200-room hotel, and obviously there's services that go with that, probably the same or even less actually. We cross at-grade on Dell's Ranch Road presently and have what probably went the last five or six years short.
Yes, that's actually, this location is the very top end of the proposed annexation. It's adjacent to the industrial area and then granted, that was the state's subdivision right here.
I wanted a question.
Yes, sir.
At this time, are you planning to do any construction of homes in this, in this development on your own? Or are you going to be just simply selling, buying lots or parcels to builders?
So if I got to write the ticket, which I don't, because the market writes the ticket. Markets move up, markets move down. What, what we would do on the southern piece of property is upon approval, if we gain approval, we'll design the resort first. That, that is the marquee piece of land, it's the anchor, if you will. And, and the design of the resort is going to end up driving the residential development that you'll pass through coming from Fippen Trail to access the resort. So by way of example, although I appreciate people's questions about unit counts and apartment density and stuff like that, the bottom line in this deal is it's all dedicated, dictated by the amount of water. So as we look at the southern parcel particularly, we have a number not to be exceeded of 850 units, with 200 units of resort. So what we'll do, we'll plan the resort, come up with the concept. That probably looks like an RFP. This will come from high-end architectural firms. It's, it's a marquee piece of land that, that will then create the ability for us to show City of Prescott what the project's going to look like, not only horizontally in a two-dimensional way like we do at this level of planning, but with, with the renderings and with all the technology these days, you end up with videos where you can walk through the building, which is actually great. Very descriptive. From there, I look at it this way, George, the, there's kind of two options. We either go with a max density type program because it's incredibly valuable piece of land in a wonderful location because that fits the resort, or we might go less density. You know, is there a possibility that we end up with 400 units instead of 850 units on next to the resort? The answer is absolutely yes. Why is that? We're worried, I shouldn't say worried, we're concerned about the intensity of the neighborhood as it would relate to the resort. Again, the resort we view as the marquee piece of this development to the south. So the residential has to complement it. Resort drives the process, residential complements it. And at the end of the day, whether it's a multifamily unit or in a state lot with a large home on it, we have a cap of 850 that can't be exceeded. So it makes it pretty easy when we come back with our land plans and our preliminary plat, you know, the, the folks sitting in East here someday will go, here's a development agreement which will include the water service agreement. Here, here's the zoning, here's the plan, does it match or not? Obviously, after six years, it's going to match.
George, could you just clarify or maybe Mr. Geese can for me? The 850 units, is that all of the green below K and L? The east side of the P-Vine or also on the west side of the P-Vine?
It's actually this area.
Well, you keep showing them open space there, so you're making my life work.
Yeah, so. A through H is where the residential, the, the NOS is the city-owned natural open space.
Yeah, so no residential in the NOS.
Nothing in there.
And within here, it would be subject to the future master plan for the SBC district. So this is the residential in this area.
And that you can fluctuate up to 850.
And capped at 850?
Whenever the market's going to dictate, you use what you.
Absolutely, and then what, what do we do with the excess water? Well, we move it north. So, so the basic concept that surrounds the deal that's on the table is that we are transferring density from the, the sensitive land, which is the NOS on this map, and we're moving it north. The next level of, I guess, control that the city wanted was the 850-unit maximum on this southern piece. If we take section 33, which we're delving into the weeds just a little bit, and let's say we have 450 residential units and there's 400 units worth of water, then we would take that 400 units to section 33 potentially, or north across the highway, again, depending on what those concepts turn into over the course of time. Planning on this one, I get asked this question a lot. You know, what, what happens after this deal is done? Well, all of 2021 is engineering. 2022, in some cases like this piece of property, will still be engineering and planning. 2023, we actually would start building some first phases and we'd start our projects. So that means that in late 2022, early 2023, we're back coming through the process with the preliminary plats for the site, or the commercial site plan approvals per the Land Development Code. So all of those steps along the way will come to planning and zoning, come to council for approval, and then we would obviously have the ability to build them after we secure those approvals.
Thank you very much for your help.
No problem.
Any other questions from Mr. Geese at this time? Thank you, sir. May call back later.
Sure, anytime.
So we do have a presentation request for Walt Anderson. Do you want me to know, is he on? And shall I go ahead and start that presentation?
Hold on, let me bring him in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Walt, are you there?
Yes, I am. Okay, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again as we're working on some of the details of the proposal. And we've come a long way, I'm really excited that this is, has come to the point where it is. So we still believe that a small shift in the boundaries will benefit the city tremendously. And we appreciate your ability as commissioners to make such changes in your recommendation to the city council. Next slide, please. You've seen this map before, but it emphasizes where the natural open space is. It deviates from our save the Dell's proposal by extending a thumb of unbuildable Dell's Rock to the north, adding 11 acres in the two small parcels along the highway to the west, and moving the southern boundary of, of H down such that houses would be built upon the grassy ridge line in its archaeological site. And that's our big concern that we want to address today and a couple other things. It would destroy the gorgeous view from the P-Vine Trail. It compromised the valley and increased the chance of erosion on the slopes there. Next slide, please. So this is a view that I'm referring to, perhaps the very best view of any part of the P-Vine. And please note where the Indian ruins are on the ridge. It's one thing to look at a conceptual map in two dimensions, such as the graphic I showed, but it's much more meaningful to see the landscape as it is. This image is worth a thousand words. And it's even more meaningful to experience it as the users, thousands of users who walk bike or ride horses on the P-Vine National Recreation Trail do. I'll next show you areas offered by AEB as open space that don't begin to compare in value to this site that we want to protect. Next slide, please. You can see here on the west side of 89, a view from open space actually on Hazelwood property. That's open space. But the highway makes a very strong curve here to proceed toward the Fippen Museum. Traffic is fast and noisy with an extremely limited sight distance. And we know that Highway 89 is slated for widening, which would reduce the acreage of rocks and increase its isolation from the rest of the AEB open space. It's a dangerous spot, rocky, and of little scenic or educational value. It's right across from the Three Sisters Consignment and a mobile home park. Next slide, please. Next to Three Sisters is this small block that is highly impacted by the highway. And of course, the highway will be widened. AED proposed it here as open space, but at the last planning and zoning hearing, Jason Geese said it would be flattened for a parking lot, and it really can't be both. Next slide, please. We propose trading the eleven acres in the two small parcels bisected by Highway eighty-nine for similar acreage of truly functional open space by moving the south boundary of H up so that the ruins are protected. We have suggested that a possible site for the desired interpretive center could be next to the archaeological site such that cultural protection and education could be combined beautifully. However, even if a different site is chosen for the interpretive center, it makes good sense for the grassy ridge with the pit houses and pueblo to be protected as explained before. And as was referred to earlier, it would be the preference of the city to leave it undestroyed. Thank you. Next slide. So the future is in our hands. We need to envision it and then make it happen in the best way possible because mistakes can't be undone. Look at this ridge as seen from Castle Rock in the Granite Gardens area. That's already open space for the city. Do we want to see an important Native American site and the best view from the P-Vine Trail become the scene on the right? We're not asking to save most of the grasslands and farmlands of H. We just want to protect the significant site we have identified as a proper placement for natural open space. And if the city wants this, they can make it happen. We ask you to recommend that to city council, then it's up to them. Next slide, please. One more thing. At the last hearing, Barbara Jacobson raised an important question that wasn't answered. She asked about the so-called park that AED and the city have mentioned. The area in question is outlined here. It's on Granite Creek just upstream from the old eighty-nine A Bridge. This is a vital riparian area with springs and breeding habitat for the common blackhawk, wood duck, and other birds, and it should be left undeveloped as natural open space, not a park in the sense that Granite Creek Park is downtown. We prefer the word preserve for sensitive areas like this. Next slide. Here's Granite Creek at the old eighty-nine A Bridge. And this is not a place for a lake, what I quote, swings, slides, picnic tables, restrooms, and other developments. Next slide, please. So we have some very important decisions to make for the quality of life we want for Prescott and Yavapai County. The sentiment of the community is very strong. We love the Granite Dells. Let's find the best possible solutions in this planning process so that we can grow, but in a responsible, wise manner. There is a real landscape out there on which your decisions will be based. We freely offer our services to you to take you out there to see the beauty that exists as well as the reality of traffic along Highway eighty-nine and how it compromises those parcels west of Granite Creek. Just let us know when you'd like to go and we'll arrange it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our recreation services director might have a comment in regard to that. If he does, sorry, we jump aside. Before we do, we'll step back to that.
Before we do, I want to thank Walt for his presentation.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. And I've been talking to Walt pretty regularly through this. I guess the comment I have on this is really a comment, and then just say, this is pre any kind of planning. We're looking at doing some very planning in the north which will encompass this, so really, we don't know what that park looks like. It's out where it has swings, out where it has developed like Granite Creek Park, more preserved is probably where we'll go. There's a common process to be followed on this side. We're just not there.
Do we have members of the public who want to make comments?
And do we have?
Well, I have one comment part to read. It's actually submitted via email, and then if we could go to this new comments.
There we go.
Okay, so this comment is from resident Michael Geddy, address seventeen eighty Commonwealth. I will read his email. Let me start by commending AED on the generous donation of land to facilitate future runway expansion in approach protection for Prescott Regional Airport. However, one of the most detrimental things that can affect the use of an airport is issue of residential encroachment, allowing the wrong kind of building, residential, too close not only to the air itself, but too close to normal flight paths and traffic patterns. These issues can be airport killers in extreme cases, such as Santa Monica, California, Santa Monica, sorry, or at least a source of continual noise complaints to airport and city officials forever. Nobody really wants to infringe on the legal rights of landowners and developers to profit economically on the use of their property. However, the reason we have zoning laws is to also reasonably protect the rights of those entities bordering the developments. In this case, the Prescott Regional Airport. Allowing residential development in close proximity to the airport is asking for trouble. Yes, you can require builders and developers to upgrade windows and installations to a higher standard to mask the aircraft noise, and you can legally advise a new home buyer that they will be living near an airport and can expect aircraft over like noise. However, ultimate, ultimately, reality will set in and the complaints will start. Nothing like having windows open to enjoy our beautiful weather or sitting on your patio to realize you are under an airport traffic pattern. My point here is planning and zoning is a first stop in keeping encroachment at bay. It is vitally important that the members fully understand the importance and significance of the encroachment issue and take seriously the implications that flawed zoning decisions will have on the future of our airport and all the future businesses that will depend on the airport's success. This is a one-time opportunity to get it right. Also want to note, Michael is on the Airport Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Kaylee. Kami, do we have online requests for speaking opportunities?
Yes, we have Paula Burr. Paula? Let me. Hi, Paula. You need to unmute yourself.
Okay, there you are. This is Paula Burr. I'm the vice chair of Save the Dells, and this has been a very interesting meeting because I've learned some things that I have not heard before, and I've been involved with the negotiations from the very beginning. And the first one is the revelation that the eleven acres around Highway eighty-nine are in fact not going to be zoned as natural open space because the city doesn't have the ability to do that. And that means that AED is actually giving this natural open space four hundred and sixty-three acres, which is already below the one to two percent that Mr. Palladini mentioned. And, and while Mr. Worley has suggested that they will be open spacey in nature, open spacey is, as I'm sure he knows, not a zoning. And in fact, that area around the highway is zoned as C two. So there's no guarantee that they will be used for open space. So that, that's a bit of a problem, I think. The other comment I'd like to make is that at the last meeting, or at the last, yeah, the last meeting, Mr. Palladini stated that you cannot do conditional zoning, which of course is absolutely right. If a property is granted a zoning, all of the allowable uses under that zoning are also granted. And that means that if AED gets this SPC zoning in K and L, they're going to be entitled to build houses in there because houses are allowed under SPC. And while the council does have to approve a master plan, as Mr. Geese said, the market writes the ticket. So what happens five to ten years from now when AED comes back and says that the market doesn't support a resort? Will plan and zoning and the city deny him an allowed use within his SPC zoning if he says he wants to at that time build housing? And I really feel that if they, if they get that zoning, that the city is going to lose control over the intent of the LOI, which is for that area to be a resort or for it to not be developed. And I might also mention that the resort being the marquee aspect of this development is the first that I've heard of, of that. If AED is truly interested in, in making K and L a resort, I, I wouldn't see why they would have any problem with designating that area as open space as a placeholder until their plans are ready. Because they know that this council and any future council would be very happy to resort, rezone that to accommodate a high-end resort, given the revenue and the employment that that would generate. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment? That's right. Okay, can I point out, you, you, what are either falsehoods or simply inaccurate statements? We just heard, A, the development, both the LOI and the development, the development require that the language in the LOI and it'll carry some development agreement says that the four hundred and seventy-five acres plus your mine is will be dedicated as permanent open space. So it includes the eleven acres that aren't, that will not, that aren't going to be, that aren't planned to be annexed in property. So the development agreement that, from a contractual standpoint, talks about that, that all four seventy-five to be dedicated as permanent. So that's, you know, and that doesn't slow the city down from saying go into the county and ask them for a rezoning or putting a deed restriction on the property or something like that. But the development agreement and, and the LOI currently in the development agreement, future will, you know, will, will carry that language through. The other issue that was raised is dealing with parcels K and L, but again, the development agreement, well, I'll let me back up. The SPC zoning does not require residential use. The SPC zoning in the Land Development Code was changed partly four or five years ago to, to allow for that site plan or master plan specific development, but, but there's nothing in there that requires residential development. So the development agreement, and the LOI does this, and the development agreement will carry that through again, says that K and L will be a two hundred-room eagle-friendly resort. So again, it is a, it is a level of assurance is just as good as zoning, or if not better, because it's contractual in nature. It's also, let me point out that nothing that a legislative body, that nothing that a legislative body does can bind a future legislative body. So this notion that, well, that's zone K and L natural open space with this sort of direction to a future legislative body to, well, when the developer comes in with a specific plan for hotels, then go ahead and rezonate. It's just, it's just not legally allowed. In other words, legislation doesn't, can't bind future legislation. So, and I could suggest to you that if K and L is zoned natural open space, this whole deal, death. I mean, I'm pretty confident, in fact, I'm absolutely confident that if you, if, if the city ultimately zones K and L natural open space, the whole thing goes away. So just be aware of sort of those, those things that when you, when you do it, if, if you've ever and sure, everybody here is done transaction, done negotiation, you don't get everything you want. You know, Rolling Stone said, you get what you need. So I think in this case, we have to keep remembering the big picture here, and that is nine hundred acres, nearly, nearly ninety acres of open space. Four seventy-five on the south and four hundred in the north. In terms of publicly owned, city-owned open space, and that, that's in addition to the private-owned open space that we see on the south parcel as well as what you saw on some of the master planning areas in the north parcel, Granite Creek and some of those little parklets and parks and things that are in there. So just want to kind of point out that to sort of stop before it becomes mythology, this whole idea that it's, no, it's only four sixty-three now, or, or, or this just because the, the county's own in the zone C two, it doesn't, that, that means that something's going to happen on there because the, the LOI and the development agreement take care of those issues. And again, if, if it's something that the council decides to do, you can direct staff to go ahead and apply for a rezoning at the county. The county, open space, whatever the zoning is there.
Right, John.
So next, we have yes, what? Go ahead.
Mr. Geese is at the microphone. Thank you. Just to reaffirm what John said, if, if we don't have resort zoning on K and L, there would not be a deal. I think it's important that, that I read that into for record. We, we really have a very equitable deal. It's a win-win-win deal for everybody, the public, the city, and AED. And, and that's why we worked so hard on the letter of intent in order to spell those terms out. So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Kami, go ahead.
Okay, next we have Ralph Hess. Ralph, you can unmute yourself. Ralph, you can unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay. There was a delay in the display box coming up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good morning. I'm Ralph Hess of Prescott. My mailing address is Post Office Box four one six six Prescott. And I find myself in the difficult role of suggesting that contrary to the staff recommendations, you, you cannot responsibly fulfill your commission duties of considering AED's zoning requests for parcels K and L without reviewing the required specific SPC master plan and annexation application without reviewing the pre-annexation development agreement that will contain the conditions, terms, restrictions, and requirements for annexation. As we've heard, AED over and over again, AED is, is requesting parcels K and L be rezoned a specific plan community district. And according to the letter of intent, those parcels K and L are to be the site of the resort. Staff states a resort is an available use, yet a hotel is not identified as a permitted or conditional use in a SPC district by the Land Development Code. When I looked at the section that sets forth the uses that are available under SPC, perhaps that could be explained a little more clearly as to what the basis is for a resort to be in an SPC district. The Land Development Code requires, and I mentioned this last week, but I haven't heard anyone specifically address it, only indirectly. The Land Development Code requires that, quote, "in establishing a SPC district", end quote, "the city must require a master plan of the development", and that's Land Development Code four point thirteen point three point A. I usually try to avoid dumping those numbers on you, but that's, that's the reference. And staff characterized this required master plan as a sub-master plan, and based on what I've heard today, kind of in order to distinguish it between the overall master plan, that the council can defer until AED, AED is ready and you will consider that later. Yet it is, that is not what the code provides. The code provides that you have to, the, the council must require that master plan in establishing the district. And what you're being asked to do is to recommend the establishment of this district without being able to see the specific master plan. I assert that you cannot responsibly consider the SPC zoning without reviewing that required SPC master plan prior to making your decision. The Land Development Code and frankly, common sense dictates so. AED should be required to present its SPC master plan now. If it cannot do so, it should return to the commission when it can. It's just, Mr. Geese, just It's just, Mr. Geese just stated that this is going to be the hallmark of his plan or of his development, and they've had years to try to set up who's going to be the hotel provider. So why don't we have that, so that you're not, in a sense, as I heard earlier, putting the cart before the horse? You've also been told that the pre-annexa, pre-annexation development agreement that city and AED are negotiating will contain agreements regarding land use. And pursuant to the state statute, and I'll dump another number on you, ARS Section 9, 500.05 H1H, a development agreement includes, quote, "conditions, terms, and restrictions and requirements for annexation". And the Prescott City Code, and you've already been told of this, the Prescott City Code 1-6-3 states that as part of the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall include to review, consider, and recommend to the city council approval or denial of proposed annexations into the city. I am not aware of any law that precludes the commission from reviewing development agreements to assist in making its recommendation regarding annexations. And in fact, once again, how are you going to be able to make a recommendation regarding an annexation if you don't have the opportunity to see what the terms and conditions are that are set forth in the development agreement or pre-annexation development agreement that are going to control that annexation? I have been told that Flagstaff posts drafts of development agreements online with strike-throughs to show the changes so that public's aware of the process. And of course, and so would the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, I haven't been able to confirm that because, because I heard of that during this meeting, but you surely can. I assert you cannot responsibly fulfill your duty to make an informed recommendation to city council regarding this proposed annexation without reviewing and taking public comment on the pre-annexation development agreement that's going to contain the conditions, terms, restrictions, and requirements for annexation. And one last note on it, it's kind of a general note that I looked at the agenda today, and this is a question, I guess, more from Mr. Palladini. What is the effect of the agenda not identifying this proceeding as a public hearing? That's, I don't see it anywhere on the agenda. And that's, that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
John, did you want to make any comments? Not necessarily, because I think you've already addressed those issues in my presentation. The only question that came up, I think, was regarding, yeah, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but this is a statutory, statutory requirement of a public hearing, and you're agreeing a public hearing, taking public comment. So if the agenda doesn't say a public hearing, it doesn't really have any effect on the fact that this is a catch for a required public hearing.
Okay. Yes, we have Leslie Hoy. Leslie, you can unmute yourself.
Good morning. Just to the point about the public hearing, the agenda does not state that it is a public hearing.
Excuse me, Leslie, can you give us an address, please?
Oh, it's 1880 Coyote Road in Prescott. I have three points I'd like to speak to with regard to the letter of intent that was discussed earlier. When it comes to the 375 acre feet of water that AED is supposedly bringing to the agreement, I think that commission and the public should know that AED's rights are not rights, but are claims due to the fact that their claim is part of the Gila River adjudication. It's certain that at the point their claim is adjudicated, they will not receive 375 acre feet, or if the city's holding those, the claim at that point, the city won't receive 375 acre feet, because the claims on the water exceed the actual amount of water, the total claims. Another problem is, of course, the water will be pumped as groundwater, and that will add to the overdraft. How much water the city would actually be getting from AED and how much water will ultimately be pumped from the aquifer is in question. It's not that easy to calculate because of the uncertainty about the adjudication, the amount that the city plans to recharge from the lake after leaving in an amount for recreation, the amount that will be recharged from the AED developments. And then, of course, there's the drought, and I believe it might have been Commissioner Hutchinson who mentioned earlier, a lake can dry up. So those are some issues, and I don't know at what point those are going to get clarified. When it comes to the amount of effluent that will be recharged, the city continues to say that it will be 90%, but we have not seen any data that backs that up. And I would, the latest estimate I saw from C-WAG was that it would be 82 or 83%. And I do believe that the city should show us the data before continuing to use that figure. And then, my final comment is, if Section 33 is annexed by Prescott Valley, for instance, how certain can you be that you can enforce the, all the requirements that were listed in earlier today that would be concerning the water? Like, how can you enforce the permanent recharge if the land is now, if it's going to be in Prescott Valley? And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have, we have Paula Burr again. Hold on one second. Paula?
Yes, I just wanted to comment back to Mr. Palladini since he referenced some of the things I said. You know, he keeps holding up the development agreements and the master plans as the most important part of this whole thing. And I agree, they are very important, and I know a lot of the details will come out in that. But development agreements expire, and development agreements get amended all the time. But zoning lasts forever. It lasts until the developer, the landowner chooses to have the zoning changed. So at the end of the day, it's the zoning that's on a property that is the most important thing. I never said that SPC required housing. I said that housing is an allowable use under SPC. And as Mr. Palladini pointed out, if you own something a particular way, all allowable uses are also assumed in that zoning. So it's never really been answered, what happens five years down the line? Mr. Geese has just said that, you know, they're not even planning on doing anything with this for probably three years. What happens five years down the line if they find that a resort isn't financially viable in that area? What happens? And my other comment is, is that it is not a myth that we have now 463 acres of open space, because that's all that's actually on the table for actual zoning as open space, is 463 acres. I would very much appreciate a response to what happens if it's found that a resort is not financially viable in that area and the SPC, SPC zoning is already granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So I can take a turn at the SPC zoning from a zoning standpoint, rather than a legal standpoint. In order to develop the SPC properties, our code requires a master plan be approved. That master plan controls what happens. It's a miniature zoning code for that area. We have a number of larger areas, Hustin, Alphabell neighborhood, for instance, in Prescott, is all SPC zoning. The Eagle Ranch is all SPC zoning. The controls are in the master plan that was adopted for each of those parcels, those properties. If you want to amend the master plan later because your intent, your intended development changes, you have to go back through the rezoning process to amend the master. Eagle Ranch would have to do that if they changed the master plan to allow certain uses in areas that weren't originally required. Hustin Alphabell would have to do that to allow commercial uses in areas that were initially residential only. The same would apply here as would any other area of town that's already zoned SPC. So changing the master plan is a change of zoning under our land development code, requires a rezoning process to amend. Hopefully that helps clear up the steps that are necessary. It's an effective rezoning to change it.
And as you're, I can address this notion, and I'm not sure where it's coming from. The development agreements don't expire. They actually run with the land. When you, when a homebuyer on Parcel D on this south parcel or in the north parcel gets his or her title report, it's going to show the development. It's running with the land. It is a permanent, it is a permanent document. Does that mean that certain parts of it will apply? Sure, because most of the requirements, or many of the requirements in the development agreement are applied to the development side of it. So when a homebuyer or such, probably has very little meaning to them for the most part. And I'll just say this, a development agreement requires a majority of the council to approve, that's four votes. A rezoning requires a majority of the council to ultimately approve, it's four votes. Zoning isn't cast in stone any more than a development agreement is cast in stone. So amending zoning or amending a development agreement is effectively a similar process. Both go through the public process, and as George said, you know, by combat, by combining, and that's why I think people need to look at this as a series and a combination of approvals, annexation, initial zoning, or pre-annexation development agreement, annexation, initial zoning. But, you know, the zoning change from the initial zoning, plus ancillary approvals, SPC zoning, and a master plan approval, that's a subject of time, then subdivision planning, then, then, so there's a whole site planning, site plan approval for commercials or industrial sites. All these things are public processes that go through. And, and as George mentioned earlier, the purpose of a development agreement in this case is to give developers some public assurance that he can rely on down the road to, and so the property owners can know what's going to happen, and the public can know what's going to happen. So you have to look at these not as individual things, but as a combined, a combination, a simulation of approvals. And the development agreement is just as important as the rezoning when it comes down to what goes on on the land. And again, that is permanent to the council. I went over the LOI. All of those things are going to be incorporated into the development agreement. Knows what, what to expect as this goes into the council.
Right, John. Jamie, do we have anyone else?
No, we do not.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a series of suggested, sorry, I'm sticking through this because, suggested motions for you. Among those are actually making recommendations on each of the north and south zoning, master plan, and rezoning. So I think before we get to that point, we need to know, or we proceed into the motions stage. Just need it?
Could you, would you be surprised if that forced airport-related amendment?
So this is actually something that we are kind of requesting you vote on. We just need a consensus of you to tell us to bring you back and airports to sit here, carry a line amendment, and then we will work with the airport to do that. This is more a direction to staff.
I'll tell you this, but actually, in order to meet the six-day guideline, I'm going to make two steps of motion. One for AED South, and one for AED North, plus that loss.
Tom Hartson here with a question?
Yes, sir.
Am I right in assuming that this is a continuation of our first meeting?
Effectively, this is a second meeting, but the topics are the same, yes.
So it's really just, we're continuing from the 27th?
Actually, technically, no. We adjourned the first meeting. We reknow this, this is, obviously, it's a, it's a long sense of purposes. It's a continuation of the global discussions, but they're technically two separately noted meetings. They're the type of, over meetings.
I didn't get that. I'm sorry. Yes or no? Is this the first meeting, continuation of the first meeting?
No.
No?
This is a second meeting addressing both topics.
Is it, is it, is it the first meeting for the north annexation?
Yes, it's the first discussion of the north annexation.
But it was a gemmized on, bro.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to exert my right to postpone voting. The bylaws state that I can do that.
You can make a motion, but it requires the rest of the commission to agree. So are you making the motion to table the matter? Can you hear me, sir?
Paul, are you still there?
Are you guys looking for something for me?
Yes, sir. You would need to make a motion to table the item. I can get a second.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm having a real hard time here with the, the audio part of this. I motion that we postpone taking a vote on north and south because of the newness of this, of both of these, and that in addition to that, we insist on a site visitation for, for the south especially.
That's your motion, then?
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? If there's no second to the motion, then the motion dies.
I'm not, I'm not sure you can do that. If you read the bylaws, it says that one commissioner can stop a vote. I don't have them in front of me. I read them.
Yeah, I don't think so. Our bylaws are based on Robert's Rules of Order, and Robert's Rules of Order would have a motion to table an item and require a vote.
So may I proceed with the motion? Do you want to read them all before, talk before, before you make each individual one?
I'm going to do AED South and ask for a second, and I'll do AED North and ask for a second. That's proper.
Yeah, I would recommend that you actually make a motion, give a second, have a vote. One, two, three, and then one, two, three for the north.
We have potential seven motions.
Six.
Six motions and a recommendation.
And just, just so everybody's, the reason we're not, you're not voting on an ASAP issue, or rather giving directions, because it's not, the meeting wasn't agendized for ASAP amendment, so it's no good meeting law kind of requirement. We didn't agendize it because it sort of came up last minute. But again, as George said, within the 60-day comment period, we can, we can bring that back. The staff can bring that back to the commission. The commission can make a decision on that. And so it kind of goes to the council. The council can have all of the commission's recommendations and all of us.
Could you go back to that suggestion slide? Is that it?
So actually, I would recommend if we go with motions, do the motions for the items first, and then we'll do the recommendation to staff after.
Before I do, I would like to commend city staff, city council, AED for the hard work that everyone has done. I would tend to disagree or agree with Mr. Geese. I would tend to disagree with Mr. Geese that I don't really see this as a win-win situation. Every interested party had to concede something to get to where we are right now. And, and I think that's the true strength of the negotiation. Not everybody's happy about everything, but we have a proposal on the board to make Prescott a better place to live. So with that in, in mind. Oh, and one other comment. We're looking at this from 40,000 feet. But a lot of the discussions we heard were tending to get down in the weeds and boil the ocean. So for the public that are watching right now, I want to remind you that, as we understand it, each and every development comes back, has to come back before the planning commission again to make recommendations, and that's when we will look at the detail. So I move to recommend the equivalent city of Prescott zoning upon annexation to, to be the rural estates two acre, single family 35 and single family 18 to become RE two acre SF 35 and SF 18. Secondly, I recommend approval of the proposed master.
Let's do one more time.
And when you refer to AED.
I got one on the table. You got one on the table, so you can do a second on the, on what?
You're referring to AED South.
AED South, recommendation number one. Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Sorry, with all the last. Motion second, any further discussion? If not, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
No.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes 7-2. No, 5-2.
Now, I'd like to make another recommendation to, for approval of the proposed master plan as submitted.
Again, for AED South.
AED, this is for AED South.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second, other discussion?
Second by Lizell, and the initial was, thank you.
Any discussion concerning this? If not, please have a roll call vote.
Okay. Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
No.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-2.
Now, a third recommendation for AED South. Approval of the proposed rezoning of various portions of NOS FS 6, SB and MF-H.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Stan Galagowski.
Motion and a second made, any discussion? If not, please have a roll call vote.
Okay. Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
No.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2.
Now, I'd like to make three recommendations for AED North. First is to recommend the equivalent city of Prescott zoning upon annexation to rural estate two acre, and that becomes RE two acre.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Stan Galagowski.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please have a roll call vote.
Okay. Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And for AED North, my second recommendation is to approve the proposal of the master plan as submitted.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Greg Lizell.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please have a roll call vote.
Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Gregory Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-1.
Now, it brings us to the third recommendation for AED North, and that is to recommend the approval of the proposed rezoning to NOS, comma, IG, comma, IT, comma, MU, comma, SF 6, and MH.
The MH is the SF 6 MH. MH means it allows for manufactured homes on portions of property.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Butch Tracy.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Okay.
No discussion, please have a roll call vote.
Ted Dambogi?
Yes.
Stan Galagowski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
No.
Greg Lizell?
Yes.
George Lee?
Yes.
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1.
And I have one more recommendation, and that is to request city staff to initiate, initiate an amendment ASAP to address Figure 6 land uses and densities for the Planning and Zoning Commission review and recommendations to council.
So, Mr. Chairman, we wouldn't take a vote on that, but if there is a consensus, or at least a majority consensus of the commission, that that's what you want, then just indicate that, either by just all nodding your heads, or, or, or if there's any objection, speak now.
If we have an objection, please let me know. If not, we will make this our recommendation. Seeing no objections, it is a recommendation.
Thank you, that was very clear, sir. Now, this is the end of our presentation on this topic.
Okay, do we have any staff updates?
We do have at this time.
All right, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I still move.
Second? Great, we're adjourned.